How does that make you?
The mayor.
The magic iron drum.
He's connecting the four.
Oh, he's got to lean back.
He's got to lean back.
That tool that. Somebody said.
You want to be complained about?
I do.
He has five steps.
He is working on that.
You may have had 22 seconds.
Sign off on it. It's higher than the school. I talked to Peter. Please take that to court. It's higher than the.
It's like everything in that.
I'm sure it's going to be on that plane.
Yeah.
He's.
Twenty-five.
Three pictures.
So he's been a rental for most part.
I can get on the system. So only miss first maybe thirty.
All right, that's fine. That was perfect.
Not that I couldn't have just missed it, but I think.
I don't believe you can.
Plane's not late.
I don't believe you can.
Yeah.
Glenn's over there.
He just didn't know.
I got caught.
No, it's not. Yeah.
We hit. I'm going to leave.
Because.
He hits her so.
Didn't we do the August one? In tenth of July?
No, we canceled that one. A lot of people tonight. But I was saying Mike wants to get in at seven o'clock, so I could.
I didn't even know if there's going to be. I talked to two people. They said they got there. I think it was late twenty minutes and they sort of pull away from the day. You better wait. Not enough people, not enough aircraft.
And they're. And she recognized.
What are we trying to say about an invitation? Uh, so.
What do you do with them? They're not going to come back?
Yeah, we're not. We used to have.
Yes. I said, no, we just.
We're the witness to the same housing. It's good. I'm like on the open.
I'm a lawyer.
Internet seemed a little slow.
But I said, I don't vote.
You're always the one. I'm going to sit down.
I believe so.
I mean, obviously, I never really look for a minute.
Because it never.
My air conditioner is doing something.
Like so weird. It's like a press.
Just because.
There you go. Sounds like completely ran up.
I don't think my wife usually takes care of.
Do anything.
Dude, anything you can't, I'd give it to you.
Okay, you can.
Reporting in progress.
I know. Down there, you ready? Things we have to do.
Good? Ready? Pay tax.
Apparently, all those people.
Well, they're about to be ready. Good.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome at six thirty P. M., which means it's city commission time. Um, second Tuesday of the month. Welcome to the regular Lighthouse Point City Commission meeting of June fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two. We'll be utilizing communications technology in hybrid format here live and in person and via the Zoom virtual platform. Mayor Van Buskirk, would you please lead us in an invocation to start us off?
Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening to transact the business of the city, we ask for your guidance so that our actions reflect what is best for our entire community. Help us to keep an open mind so we can listen to others in order to make and inform decisions on the matters before us this evening. Please remind us to be honest and fair. We ask that you bestow your wisdom, strength, and grace on our city officials, staff members, and residents who are here to work together for the people of Lighthouse Point. We ask you to remind us to treat everyone with dignity, respect, patience, and justice. We ask for your protection and guidance for our country in this trying time and for the citizens of Lighthouse Point and the United States. We thank you for the privilege and the opportunity of serving our community. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor Van Buskirk. I will officially call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge of the flag. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, low call, please.
Mayor Van Buskirk.
Here.
Commission President Joffe.
Here.
Commission Vice President Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Long.
Here.
Commissioner Patron.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
City Attorney Cirillo.
Here.
City Administrator Loviski.
Here.
Finance Director Olympia. Assistant Chief Long.
Here.
Library Director Keys.
Here.
Police Chief Licata. Public Works Director Schramm.
Here.
Recreation Director Ward.
Here.
Also accounted for.
All right, a full house. Ladies and gentlemen, the first items on our agenda are a few presentations that are going to be handled by our mayor. The first one is a very important one, and we are going to unveil a portrait of Mayor President. His family is here tonight, which is very, very happy and lovely to have them here with us. And a lot of friends and family, I'd say.
As the previous day in Arizona we've done before, we hang Glenn's hood here as a thank you and an idea that what he put into our city and how he let us grow and how he prepares for the future. We thank you for all. We thank you for all that he has done for our city for the future, something that must be remembered. I know that was hard, but I actually think that the next aspect is something I was not looking forward to doing personally. Because.
That was driving me crazy. Thank you.
Somebody's OCD. Take it in medication or more. But I'm going to stand up here so that we're same height. But if I could have Evan Tros to come up. As I was saying previously, this is actually the one I did. Your dad, obviously, being such an amazingly young Eagle Scout, which you reminded me, so. And all the time and effort he knew that you put into accomplishing this is no doubt the happiest man. So, city, this is the proclamation. Whereas scouting for both boys and girls has been an integral part of our community as well as a positive influence for many years. And whereas Eagle Scout Evan Tros, in his senior year at Westminster Academy, has earned the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Eagle Scout project involved the build and installation of two outhouses at DeGraw Park. And whereas Boy Scout Evan Tros from Troop Two Thirty-Eight was recognized by Boy Scouts of America as the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for successfully completing all requirements for scouting's highest rank. And whereas friends, family, and neighbors all gathered support Evan Tros on his attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout and recognize the faithful and steady path taken by the scouting organizations. And whereas I commend Evan Tros on his significant accomplishment, which is a testament of his remarkable commitment and leadership skills. Now, therefore, I, Kyle Van Buskirk, with authority vested in the name of the mayor of Lighthouse Point, do hereby recognize and congratulate Eagle Scout Evan Tros.
You're still not too old to get a kiss. I can tell you that.
I know. I want to kiss him, but he wants me to hold this. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
I do want to thank all of Troop Two Thirty-Eight and all of the Tros friends and family that showed up this evening. I think it's a true testament to Evan's hard work and also Glenn's legacy. So thank you for all attending. Commissioner Joffe.
All right. I just, uh, I am, probably a lot of us up here, I'm reminded of the talks we would have with Glenn and Evan in his pursuit for this goal was often mentioned. So it is extremely wonderful to have him and Marjorie here tonight. So thank you very much and all the friends and family. All right, on to the business as Glenn would have wanted us to do. Approval of minutes, regular meeting of May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Commissioners, you've had the minutes. Any comments, amendments, or additions?
We're doing the recognition of the.
Yeah, they canceled.
They canceled.
Where are you shooting?
Was it something you said?
We haven't gotten to the annoying part yet.
Look at this.
Went from full.
Yeah, really.
Nobody likes us.
Yeah.
Commissioners, we can proceed. It's just the approval minutes. Do you have a motion?
Motion to pass the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second for the approval of the regular minutes of May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes five zero. Ms. Olympia, Treasurer's report, please. I cleared it out.
Good evening. Treasurer's report, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. General funds, four million, eighty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Cleanup deposits, forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. Garbage and trash fund, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and nine cents. Special purpose funds, five million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Stormwater utility fund, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Construction and debt service funds, three million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Reserve for encumbrances, general fund, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents. All other funds, three million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Contingency, five million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, twenty-nine dollars and zero cents. Total all funds, twenty-four million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and three cents.
Any questions for our Finance Director? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is public comments and requests regarding agenda items. We have a lot of discussion items on our agenda, ranging from synthetic turf, utility box wrap program, discussion of height hedges. Looks like we might buy a police vehicle. So if you have any comments about any of the agenda items, the items on our agenda now would be your time to come up. Uh, state your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Laura Sobel, and I'm here today as a Lighthouse Point resident because I want the city to look its best. One way to do this is to update and simplify the city permit process for installing synthetic turf. This will encourage other residents to use turf when approving their landscaping. I appreciate the time given to present updated turf information so the committee can modify the current ordinance, forty-two dash three ninety-two, on synthetic turf. I'm introducing Mr. Joe Miller, President of J. P. Miller &amp; Sons Services, who is a certified expert in this field. With his knowledge and his brief explanation, I feel you will have the confidence to make the following changes. One is to lower the minimum blade height from an inch and three quarters to one inch. Change the installation standard from requiring a general contractor or landscape architect license to requiring a turf installer to provide documentation of insurance. And third, allowing turf to be installed in the residential swell areas as it is a cleaner and easier material to use when maintenance is required. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'd like to bring up Mr. Joe Miller and his son. Is it okay or acceptable to provide turf you to take a look at? We have samples to pass.
Um, I mean, maybe we have during the discussion, we're going to have a discussion item, maybe that might be more appropriate.
Just so you can see it and see the changes.
So maybe, is that okay? Or do you want it now, or do you want to wait for the discussion?
Maybe.
Well, he's only going to have three minutes to speak.
Right.
So maybe wait for the discussion. That'd be my preference unless somebody wants it now. To pat while we're.
Oh, I just wanted to.
We're just saying you see what the improvements are.
That's fine. You can bring it up. That's fine if you want to bring it up.
Hello, I'm Joe Miller, as stated, President of J. P. Miller &amp; Sons. My pest management company is forty-eight years old this year, right in Deerfield. And Mayor and fellow commissioners, I was the City Commissioner in Deerfield for ten years, oh nine to nineteen, term limited out. So I appreciate your service to your community. As I said, we're a pest management company. One of our divisions, I mean, among termites and household pest control is lawn spraying and such like that. So we have lawn spraying crew. We have a landscaping division. But a year ago, my sons were talking about ways to expand our business, and we saw the trend for synthetic turf. And probably we know turf is better than most people. We go to continuing education for myself forty-eight years. We know places where our regular St. Augustine does not work well, and we know a solution to that, and it's the synthetic turf. We decided to go with a premium brand, and we joined, we are the dealer for Forever Lawn out of Ohio. It's a nationwide company with over fifty dealerships. And your ordinance does not allow us to actually sell some of our most popular products. For example, we have what we call a canine turf, ideal for people whose backyard their dogs are in the backyard. We're going to show you a sample of that. It literally is the biggest seller of this company that sells millions of square feet of turf a year. It's our canine turf that drains a hundred percent drainage. We put a four-inch rock base, this turf that drains. We adhere it around the perimeters with synthetic boards, composite boards, stapled in, it doesn't go anywhere. But it's not an inch and a half tall, and it's purposely not tall. Because it not only will not swell, smell, because it doesn't drain, it does drain. You can pick up solid waste without getting it all over the rest of the grass, and it's purposely that height. And it literally is our top seller. We've got two varieties of that, our classic and elite. So, and I just wanted, and there's something else. We were going to show you our competitions backing compared to our backing. We went, this is a premium brand synthetic turf. And Lighthouse Point, I mean, our business is right in Deerfield. Jimmy just closed on a house last week in Lighthouse Point. So we're a neighbor and such. But there was a couple of things on your thing, I know I'm running out of time. You maintain an eight-year warranty, ours as a factory warranty for fifteen years. It must be one point seven five inches. Our most popular turf, the canine, is not that tall. Have minimum weight of seventy-five ounces per square yard. I think our two canine, our landscape turfs, one is fifty and one is seventy. I don't know where you got that spec from, but if you saw the difference, does that mean my.
Yeah, your time's up. I apologize. But we're going to have a big, healthy discussion about this, so.
All right, you have discussion. I'll be glad to be called on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Donahue, two eight two zero, Northeast Thirty-Ninth Court. I'm really glad to see that these people are here tonight because I was hoping that we were going to see a little bit more information on what there is for technology out there. I really believe that this has gone a long way from when you all started talking about this maybe six years ago to where we are today, and then even where people may think it was twenty years ago where you had indoor-outdoor carpet. It is a totally different world, and I'm really glad that we actually have people that are coming with these types of samples so everybody can kind of see what we're talking about. Because obviously, everybody is not a jack-of-all-trades, and everybody's not an expert. So for people to be able to see what we're dealing with and actually to hear about the dog height one sounds very reasonable. So to be able to have these things in front of you, I'm glad to see that. The hedge height, I think, is one of the things on the agenda. Is that right?
Yeah.
I know this has been a conversation over many, many years of the hedge height also. I strongly believe that we need to revisit that and increase the hedge height for people. Now, the biggest thing is that where it comes into play with cars, when you're coming out of an intersection or coming from a stop sign and you can't see around because of these tall hedges, I one hundred percent believe that those need to be taken into consideration. But when it's behind somebody's house and you want to have the division between you and your neighbor, I think it's great. And Mr. Benz, I think, was the one that came up a couple of years ago and said why the hedge height was what it was originally in nineteen fifty-six was due to the fact of no air conditioning, and so you wanted to have that cross breeze with the windows open. I truly don't believe that we have to worry about that anymore. If somebody doesn't have air conditioning now, God bless them, but I mean, it's not the type of area that we're concerned with the cross breeze getting through the hedge. And then the third one, I think, was the vans, the conversion vans. I hope that we can really find a good solution for this. I understand that the conversation started with boats and RVs, and we didn't want boats, and we didn't want RVs, and that's all understandable. But when somebody's got a conversion van that is strictly a conversion van, and we're not advertising on the side of it, we're not doing anything to say to somebody that has a large family or just wants to be comfortable on a road trip, oh, yeah, you can have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar van, but by the way, you can't park it in your driveway, I think is a little bit ridiculous. And I think there's obviously some things that we can come up with for a solution on that. So I know I'll get another chance to take a whack at this at the end, so we'll let you guys talk about it.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Anybody else? Agenda items? We have anybody, sorry, I should have mentioned this before, on Zoom. If you would like to discuss public comments and requests regarding agenda items, raise your hand. Be able to see it through Zoom. Don't see anybody raising their hand. Madam Clerk, do you?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else want to come up? I see anybody else coming up. All right, so we'll close public comments. Oh, you're on it. Are you like wavering, whether you know you weren't sure?
I'm going to wait till the end, but. Ari Silverstein, thirty-two oh one, Northeast Thirty-First Avenue. Just wanted to come up and talk briefly about the turf. Going through a big remodel right now, and we're considering turf for the backyard. I think the, you guys have done a great job of sort of helping people bring Lighthouse Point into this millennium. There have been a lot of rules on the books that have been out there for a long time that really don't fit with what I've seen in my remodel and what people are going through now. You changed the outdoor structure policy, which I think is good. It sort of brings things up to the times. And I think as, you know, a community, we need to keep doing that to make sure that we enable the people who live here to do what's best for them and their house and whatnot. And I think turf is just one of those things that has, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, it isn't what it is now, and I think a lot of people are doing that. It looks nice, and I think it's something that you guys should entertain.
Thank you. Anybody else want to slide in last minute?
I think he did.
I think he did. All right, so I'm now closing public comments and requests regarding agenda items. We do not have any reports from city administration, department reports. Update from city administration, our city administrator Loviski on the twenty-year stormwater master plan.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Commissioners, as you know, you approved an agreement with Kim Lee Horn to update our stormwater master plan. It's been twenty years since it's been, it was developed. A lot has happened since then, but it's time to, you know, to move forward and to look at the plan again. So the Kim Lee Horn, we had our kickoff meeting, the mayor and Chuck Schramm and I had a kickoff meeting with the engineers, and they came up with a project schedule. But the first thing we're going to have is on June the twenty-ninth, we're going to have a kickoff or an open house here for like a public outreach meeting. We're going to have it here from five to seven at night, and it's going to be similar to an FDOT public outreach meeting, like for the bridges. They'll have ESO set up, they'll have pictures of the city, and they'll have barkers, and residents can come in and they can look at the map and say, identify areas where they think there's a problem. You know, city staff.
Three by nothing.
After two.
After the big.
So that's unusual. But, you know, they look at the old stormwater master plan so they know where the problem areas were. They're meeting with city staff. We're going to tell them where the problem areas are. But it's a good way to have the public inclusive in this, and they can tell the engineers where they think problems are, and which is going to be very valuable. So after that, then they're going to start their data collection and field inventory. The whole stormwater master plan, they have it on a schedule now to be finished next May of twenty-three, by the time they do all the analysis and put the book together. I talked to the engineer today, they're going to bring that down to probably March. They'll have it finished. That's totally finished. But in the meantime, we're going to get updates. We haven't scheduled meetings like every month. Right now, we don't think it's necessary. But as they come in and they want decisions from us or just to relay some information, then we'll have input with the contractor. And if we don't hear nothing for a little while, we're going to say, where are you at? So we're going to stay on top of it. But just anyway, put the word out, we're going to advertise it on social media, on the website. We developed a flyer that, I don't know if it's on the dais. Is it on the dais? We have a flyer we're going to send out. So tell everybody, June twenty-ninth, Wednesday, right here from five to seven, talk to the engineers about any stormwater problems that you have, any flooding that you have that you notice in the city.
Any questions for Mr. Loviski? I know it was just a kickoff meeting, but on the stormwater, did I hear something?
Yes, when will the flyers be ready? I'd be happy to spread it, spread the word if you're ready.
They should be ready now.
They're already on the website and our social media pages.
Okay. Could maybe you print some?
We can print some.
Okay.
Any other questions? I have one. Again, you know, again, something to be left to the experts and people that just like to ask questions like me sometimes. I guess the one thought I had is I know we've got paving on the agenda, and this might be later on, and we might be approving some paving, which is long overdue. But I guess my question is, again, naive here, and maybe we don't know the answer, but maybe it's a question asked them. It seems to me when you mill and pave a street, that's going to affect stormwater runoff. So if we're going to be doing, you know, potentially a major section like all of Lake Placid essentially, or a lot of Lake Placid, are they going to analyze it after the paving's done? Is that the proper way to do it? I guess my question is, it seems like it changes the game a little bit or the analysis, so.
We're going to, we're going to do, by Ken, Mary, you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, please.
We're going to do, we mill one inch and we pave one inch, but there's also areas in a city that the city engineer has identified that we want to get more crown on the road.
Okay.
So that's going to be happening. We weren't going to hold up on the paving to.
I wasn't suggesting we hold up on the paving. I was just suggesting that they analyze that part of the city after the paving, if the timing works. I don't even know if the timing works.
We will work in conjunction with both of our milling and paving and the aspect. But again, as C. Mr. Loviski has notified, we do have areas that we already are going to build on the crown of the road from taking an inch and gaining inch.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, it'll be an educational experience for us all, I'm sure. All right. Anything else on the stormwater? No? Okay. Hydrographic survey update, Public Works Director Schramm.
Yes, sir. Good evening. The hydrographic survey has begun. They're out there in the boat gathering some data. They expect the field work to be done by mid-July. They've got eighteen missile canals to do, and it'll take about a month to produce the reports. The reports and the sheets will be very similar to what we have now, other than the data changes, but it'll be the same visual presentation with contours, some colors to indicate what's shallow, more shallow and less shallow, and things like that, just like the hydrographic survey we have now on our website.
Questions on that? And I can't remember the areas there, you know, the map or whatever, the areas, but will we get, as part of this, will we be giving the dredging we just did? Are we going to, are we going to see any information related to any buildup that might have occurred in those areas as well?
We should, certainly. Certainly.
So see how it's held up? It would be interesting to see.
Absolutely.
All right, it's just a thought.
All right. Just a thought. Anything else? All right. Stay tuned, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Schramm. Reports of city attorney, our city attorney, Mr. Cirillo, has a report on something I'm certainly getting an education on, and I know Mayor Van Buskirk and the rest of city administration and Commissioner Johnson are well aware of, is the MPO and SRTAX progress update. So talk to us, Mr. Cirillo.
Mr. President, members of the city commission, and I continue to get an education on SRTAX and MPO as well. Just wanted to update you, you know, as we progress through this issue. City administration, we have had several calls with representatives of the county on SRTAX, including with our commissioner, Commissioner Fisher, and representatives of the county administration beyond the SRTAX group to try to understand the dynamics of using the money that's been allocated for the city's approved projects and whether that can be better used for other items. And if I were to tell you that the answer is still clear as mud, I think I might be exaggerating a little bit. We continue to work on that. But the conversations happen, I guess, I guess fruitful in a way in that they understand the unique situation of the city of Lighthouse Point. You know, we're not a transit center. We don't have thorough fairs to deal. What we have is bridges, and the mayor made that very clear in those conversations, that any and all help we can get from all these agencies, from the county, from looking at the SRTAX uses that are available to us, to other funding sources. We've been told by the county and the county administration that they're there to work with us to try to locate some funding that makes sense for our projects and to look at how these projects are allocated. As you know, they're currently R and M projects even because it's not a brand new bridge. It's replacing an existing bridge, and that puts really tight constraints on what we can do with SRTAX. And mayor made it clear that, that, that really does mean that there's not much that our taxpayers can get out of that program unless they find a way to allow us to use those funds for bridge replacement. And so I think we have, we got, we have some people willing to work with us to look at the issue. It is governed by the county bureaucracy. It is governed by the county commission on the SRTAX in particular. But we can stay engaged with them, and we can still try to see what we can do to use the funds appropriately in the city. So that's really what I have. Just want to let you know, we are working it. We are having phone calls and conferences and conversations to try to do things that make sense on that, on those fronts.
Mayor?
I would just like to add to the fact that I want to thank Commissioner Joffe and Commissioner Johnson. Both of them did one or the other. Commissioner Joffe was on SRTAX. Commissioner Johnson was on the MPO. But ultimately, in the end, we come back to the same recurring thing. And to Mike's point, it's as clear as mud. And figuring out how to get money for our bridges and bringing back the tax dollars that our residents put out into, I'll call it, to the universe, is, is turning out to be a long-term, and I mean, when I mean a long-term, a lot of these plans are five years. I know Commissioner Joffe, these are five-year plans. You're only now getting on the list in 2024 to get your, you know, to get your name on the list to be completed in five years. So for things that we're thinking that we're going to be able to get the next budget cycle to find money, is it always a possibility? Absolutely. But the reality is, is that these projects are anywhere between five to seven years before we would see this money come back to us. And I just want people to realize that, to Mike, and I know Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Joffe, there's almost so much time in the day. And when you sit on there and you talk to them for an hour, a couple of times, and you go through the, trying to kind of weave your way through the bureaucracy, you come back to the fact is, is this takes a full focus. And I just mention that because city staff is out there doing this and trying to get us the funding that I, we are, that we are owed, I'll be very honest with you, that we are owed, takes time and effort. And it just, and I know to Commissioner Johnson, there's almost no man or woman hours in the day to complete those tasks sometimes. And I just want to make that clearly evident because the two of you were on it and share your experiences with the rest of the commissioners, because I think it's important.
Yeah, I, I had a couple of things. One, you know, the original SRTAX vote that came that we did that got voted down by a close margin, but they, the money was to be given back, 10% of the money, or I think it was, was going to be given back to the cities automatically in relationship to their population. And they projected that we would get a million or a bit more than a million per year. So with that in mind, with this new way it's working, we should still be entitled to somewhere in that neighborhood of that money. And right now, we're pretty much shut out on it because, as Kyle said, we don't have, you know, the connectivity, which is the big buzzword, the racial streets, a bunch of that stuff. We don't have that in this town. So, you know, we need to keep reminding the county of that. But one other thing that, they have been sending us a bunch of different stuff from the MPO of all sorts of things that are going on. But one of the things they suggested when Kyle and I talked with them is that the new infrastructure bill has a big part of it on bridges, but it's very competitive. And we talked about, and there's a lot of these grants that are going to, that are out there on bridges. And the, the MPO applies for some of this stuff themselves, but they have, they hire, an organization is big and knows as much as they know, they hire professional grant writers to apply for these grants. So they made the suggestion, perhaps we'd like to look into that. I mean, I have no idea what something like that costs. I don't know how you go about doing it, but I know that they would put us on the right track if we would be interested in it. But it would cost us money, no guarantees, but might give us a better chance if we fall on our face with the SRTAX money, because this is going to be federal money.
Sorry to interrupt, but I just want to say that Commissioner Johnson was correct. When I first got up here, she was a huge proponent of the original SRTAX split, and I was against it. Actually, I think all the commissioners up here, except Commissioner Johnson, were against it. And she.
Our city only voted 30% yes.
You were proven 100% correct in the end, Commissioner Johnson. I think that's well to be noted up here, that you were correct.
Anyway.
Yeah, on the SRTAX side, having attended a couple of calls, one more recently than the other, it's just, it's not strings attached in the buzzword sense. It's not, you know, we got to do this. So no one has to get all freaked out about strings attached. It's the, it's the, it's the buzzwords that unfortunately we just don't check the boxes for here in Lighthouse Point, connectivity being, being one of them. And I just think that we're going to need to continue, it's really a lobbying effort, that if we're going to salvage this, this SRTAX money that we already have allocated to us for the Alamanda Bridge and Sample Road, it's been allocated to us for projects, I think, that, you know, aren't as desirable as they were originally submitted. And I think it's going to take a collective effort from all of us to frankly, and that was kind of the indication I got from frankly, the lawyers that I spoke to, is, you know, we, there's a, there's an interlocal agreement. It spells it out. It's, again, having read it, it's kind of clear as mud, and I tend to live in that universe a lot. But it's going to be, if there's a will, there's a way, and it's going to have to start with the legislator, legislators, meaning the county commission, giving direction from on high that this is taxpayer money. They are sitting on a expletive ton of taxpayer money, and it isn't being deployed. It is literally just sitting there, and we are not the only city that are facing these issues for a variety of reasons. Not everybody has the issues that we've had. But it really is going to take a lobbying effort, and Commissioner Fisher has listened intently and I think is open to expanding people's horizons. But that's really what it's going to take. Because as you all recall, when we got the, when we get these interlocal agreements, it's like, from the county, it's like, it's, it's.
Take it or leave it.
It's, I would call it a contract of adhesion legally, where it's a take it or leave it. I mean, we don't have to take it, but it's really kind of understood as take it or leave it. And we took it, and, you know, we really didn't have a lot of choice other than the same with bats. And so.
Which meant we would have gotten no money.
Which we, we wouldn't even had a chance to get the money.
Correct. I just want to make sure everybody realizes that.
And so I think it's going to take a lobbying effort, and I guess where it's going to take.
Another thing, they just came out with the projects that they approved for this next round a couple of days ago. And in looking over them all, and I think I sent them to you and John, I was struck by the fact that the northern part of the county and northeast, even northwest Parkland and all, we don't have the fair share of these projects. So many of them all seem like they're south and the south end or the middle areas. And maybe it's a population thing, I don't know, but we don't, we don't see, Mike, we have our cut of the pie up here.
Well, and that's the other thing, and we just need to be realistic about it. Like, let's, let's face it, population-wise, we are, we are a small community. So I also am trying to think of, I think, aren't you our new, the legal cities?
Ms. Tron.
She was going, she knew I was going to you next.
An update for you.
Yeah. I just, I just feel like the smaller cities or the cities are going to have to band together on that. So when you go to these meetings, I appreciate, and I think you would, is keep your ears open if they're facing the same problems, because we're the smaller fish in the pond. I mean, it's just the reality of the situation from a population standpoint. And I think if we band together and enough people make noise, then we might get some movement on these issues.
Sure. You know, on the MPO, we have one of our board members, executive board members is the representative of the small cities. I used to be that before I became the deputy chair, but, and it's Mayor Ziotti of North Waterdale. And she's really pushes for the small cities. She pushes it at our meetings. She's, she's very strong on it. So she's on our side, and it might be somebody, an ally for us to, to rope in to, to work with us because, you know, she's, they have more people than we do, but they're still small compared to.
Right.
The rest of the North, I mean, Waterdale and Pembroke Pines and all.
Okay. Anything else?
I did go to my first legal city meeting, and it was very interesting. I was, you know, welcomed with open arms. I think it's going to be a, a good source of information and contacts and everything. So it was just the first one. They meet every month. So I will look forward to bringing some more information back as I find it.
All right. Anything else, Mr. City Attorney?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, reports of standing committees, there are none. Board meetings, we have a planning, a planning and zoning board meeting of July 5th has been canceled. Code enforcement meets on June 21st. Community appearance, scheduled for June 16th, was canceled due to a lack of quorum. Special magistrate meets June 22nd. Marine advisory meets August 4th. We have no unfinished business. Moving on to new business, agenda item one, discussion on parking of Sprinter-style vans in residential neighborhoods. City Administrator Loviski.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, commissioners, before I get into that item, let me make a comment about the next four items, if I can. Their discussion item, we're closing the loop on some of these items. These are, if you could probably spend hours talking about each one of these items, and we could be here until 10 o'clock at your project. But if you want to move forward, if I, if these, as you go through these items, and you just, the consensus is we're not interested in changing anything, then we'll just move on, and you won't see it again. But so for any, anyway, for these four items, they're discussion items, and they can last five minutes or they can last a period of time, and that's, that's totally up to you. So we brought it to the commission several months ago about Sprinter-style vans becoming more popular for passenger vehicles. It's difficult. They're beautiful looking, these Sprinter, Mercedes Sprinter vans. And there's other types. There's Chrysler makes them. But it's, it's, what the code enforcement officers are doing is they're looking, really trying to look inside and see if it's a RV. And if it's a RV, it really shouldn't be parked in residential areas. But if it's actually a passenger van, you know, just for passengers, then they, they haven't been citing it. I know we've had a couple of people, I've approved reasonable accommodations for these type of vans because they have some kind of health problems, and they have to have bathrooms in these vans. So I approved reasonable accommodations for them to park them in their, in their driveways for a period of time. Those are both closed out now, and they're not there anymore. They're getting, they're getting more and more popular, and they're bigger. Some of these, we got the dimensions here, you know, the length is 233 inches, which is 19 and a half feet, which is not so bad for, for some of them. Some of them go as, as large as 24.2 feet. So it's, it's a lot longer type of vehicle. We have two different definitions of light van in the, in the city ordinances. We're going to clean that up with the code rewrite, and we've already have done that. So I guess the question is, do you want to, do you want to regulate and allow these larger-type vans? Because right now, you know, the way the code reads, the largest vehicle length can be 228 inches, and the smallest passenger Sprinter is 233 inches. And again, and they go as long as 24.2 feet. We asked WGI what they thought about it, and their position was, if you're going to allow them, just change the code to allow them and put dimensions in there. And if you don't want to do that, you could just say that the vehicle can be parked in a driveway, but no, can't be parked in, over the sidewalk. It can't be parked over landscaping area. If you have a big enough driveway to hold your vehicle, then you're allowed to park it there. What we've been doing in the past is public work, or code enforcement will look in the van and see if it's RV. Sometimes from the outside, you can't tell. Some have like awnings on the outside, and you can obviously tell that it's an RV, but some you can't. So if you're interested in regulating this somehow, we're looking for not positive direction, but if you give us a consensus, then we can develop something and bring it back. You don't have to cross all the Ts and doubt all the Is this evening. That's, that's my opening.
All right, very good. Thank you.
What about side yards?
Ernie?
Side yard, parking them in side yards. You didn't mention that, whether, if they would be allowed to park in the side yard.
Currently, right? Mr. Johnson, currently.
Cur, well, I mean, if we change it, are we going to, would we say?
Well, it's one of the things I think we've got to, we should discuss.
Yeah, okay. I just thought he made a list of things.
I think that's something we should, that's one of the things I, that's exactly one of my concerns as well. So I think we need to discuss that. But I'm interested, is there, at current, my understanding is, maybe this can just kick off the discussion, because that's what it's on, my understanding is, I'm sorry, sometimes I go to you guys all the meetings, sometimes I go to you guys. My understanding is that currently there is no prohibition to someone parking, frankly, any of their vehicles in the city of Lighthouse Point, if it can fit, maybe even it couldn't fit, in their side yard, frankly, in the side setback. I can think of one instance where one of these Sprinter vans, which is, which was fairly tall, was parked right next to a neighbor's fence, and you could literally see the thing parked up on the fence. So my understanding, when I inquired about that of code, is that because it wasn't, it wasn't deemed by a, a RV, there was, there was nothing could do about it. There was nothing prohibiting that, that parking. It's my understanding. Is that correct?
I'd have to check, I'd have to verify that. But my understanding is if it's, it's a side of the house, it needs to be blocked. It needs to have a hedge or something so you can't see it from the street.
Okay. All right. So.
That's why you raised the eight-foot, remember the six, you raised them to eight-foot.
Well, we did that for the boat as well, but.
Could FBS step and say, RVs can park there at the side of the house. But that was done for boats.
Right.
That was different.
So let's, let's discuss. Let's first, let's, let's bite this off in pieces to keep everybody sane. Do we, do we want to entertain this as a, as a, as a revised ordinance? Is it worthy of discuss, worthy of an ordinance? Any thoughts on that?
I would, I would guess, if they're very popular, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but as long as we could keep a handle on that there were no bathrooms in them and that it wasn't being used like that. And I would really not want to have this parked in my neighbor's yard, in my side yard. So when I looked out my side windows, I would see them. So I would definitely say not in the side yards and not blocking the sidewalks. And, I mean, I don't like the idea at all of having them. But on the other hand, I guess if that's the way the world is going now.
Mission along. Initial thoughts?
Initial thoughts, I would say that, you know, I don't know how many, it's not like we're talking about thousands out there.
Yeah.
They are extremely expensive. My concern would be not as much, one, it's 233 inches, which is just a little bit more than we allow now. But when you get into 274 and 290, you're talking really large items. I think the RV component of it creates a problem of unintended consequences, where if we allow that, what would prevent me, as someone who maybe doesn't have $175,000, but I bought a used motor home, RV, same size, same dimensions, but it's not a Sprinter van, maybe it has some, you know, goofy looking stripe on it and a couple of extra windows, but it's an RV. What's the difference between a very expensive Sprinter and? What's the difference between a very expensive Sprinter and my, you know, Clark Griswold vacation motor home with Uncle Eddie? I mean, you get into a problem there because you're classifying as an RV, and there's all types of RVs. And if now we're looking at only dimensions, you know, size, height, weight, I think that opens up a problem. I think as a passenger van, should not be an issue. And if we were to change this ordinance at all, I would definitely say, you know, no further than 233 and a half inches, which then at least qualifies as closer to what we have. I would also, if we don't already have it in, you know, in very clear to people that you can't be parking in the driveway, encroaching landscaped areas, which in theory should be saying, you can't park it on the side of your house if you're encroaching on landscaped areas, swales, streets, sidewalks. But it does, you know, we're getting a little slippery slope here in what happens with actually in there. We're talking an RV, you're gonna have bathrooms, kitchens. You could have people who come for a long weekend, you could have a vacation rental, but somebody's coming in there, and there's a lot of people, so they're using that as an auxiliary place. And, you know, we see it already when friends of Lighthouse Point residents come down, and they park their bus on the side of the road, and they're living in it for a week. And we do see that, and it happens all the time. So we do have to consider those issues and ramifications of the neighborhood with that, so.
Commissioner Marshall?
I would, at this point, I think that there, we're into a couple discussions that have to be revisited almost on a daily, not a daily basis, but a yearly basis. This being one, the synthetic turf, the way that technology is changing. We need to stay on top of these things once we get to a point. I don't see the problem, there's more and more people that have large families in the city. I don't think if you were living in Pompano, you would have a Sprinter van issue, because those people are not of the means to be able to afford to have, be able to take their kids and everybody else someplace. If in fact you said it has to be a passenger van, it could be what it is. The only thing that I'd like to see, and potentially there's places that it can't happen, I would like to see us somehow regulate that the van be parked backed into, in front of wherever it is, in front of the garage or wherever, perpendicular to the highway or the street, so that when that van is leaving, it pulls out as opposed to backing out, which creates a potential hazard of backing over somebody or running into somebody. That, other than that, I don't see, if, if the Sprinter vans at this point are 233 inches long, then let's change it to that as opposed to leaving it open. And then if the Sprinter vans start to get longer as time goes, then we relook at it. We have pickup trucks, the mayors and other people that are that long, and nobody complains about duly pickups that are in the yards, same thing. So I don't see where the, where the issue is allowing these things to continue. And I think there's only 19 of them in the whole city, out of how many houses do we have? So it's not like we're talking about they're everywhere.
Um, yes, I think they, we should definitely look at this and update, it's just like the, the turf. It's, it's changed throughout the years. I just think definitely they should not, if they have a restroom, it's an RV. They should not be allowed. Just for argument's sake, you know, you have the lengths here, 233 inches and things. A full-size, like Ford 350 or 450 with a crew cab is 260 inches. So 233 is actually less, you know, the regular pickup truck is bigger. So, and I know there's an awful lot of pickup trucks here in the city.
I think we should start from a place of consensus, if we can ban Mayor Van Busker's truck. I think we should start there. But I'm in the minority.
Yes. I mean, all of these photos, these are nice-looking vans, they obviously don't have any commercial lettering on them. I think they're just for people's use, and they want people to be comfortable, go on road trips, take all their kids and camping gear and hit the road, so.
As long as there's no bathrooms and kitchens.
Yes, absolutely.
So not be considered an RV, but a passenger vehicle, not to exceed 233.5?
Yeah, I think that's the argument, right? And I guess that was one of my, my questions. I had, I had two questions about what we can and can't do if we're able to answer them tonight. And I, I get, I think my thought process on this is, it tries to be pretty simple. One of the problems I know code enforcement ran into, and they're the, they're the ones, including, and the mayor too, and city administration has to, will have to enforce whatever, whatever ordinance we may come up with here, are we, one of the problems they were having is, is determining what was inside the vehicle. So are we, are we allowed, as a requirement of having one of these, that we be allowed? Don't want to get too bureaucracy, but can they be, do they have to be registered? I'm just throwing it out. I, I want to get inside these things in order to determine these things that we're all concerned about. Is there a bathroom? Is there, you know, whatever else is in there that makes it an RV? So are we allowed to do that?
I don't know that we could register vehicles in the city. You know, we don't, we just have city IDs or anything like that. But, you know, I think the issue with, with the bathrooms, you know, it comes down just about any other code you're gonna have, is, you know, you enact the code, and we're gonna enforce it the best we can in a legal manner. You know, if, if there is a reason to believe that it's not a passenger van, the city will do its best to investigate that. It can rely on neighbors, it can rely on information that may glean, but, you know, just like any other code, you know, you pass the code, and sometimes after we pass it, we realize, ooh, that's gonna be an interesting one to try to figure out whether that's a violation or not.
Right.
You know, and that's what code does, but they do it in a legal way. So I wouldn't want you to, you know, start thinking about maybe having folks register the special, these type of special versus other ones. But, you know, if you, if the code says you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, and you educate people, and it's, we have reason to believe somebody is, I mean, if, even if we can't, you know, prove it, be, you know, to beyond the quote-unquote reasonable doubt, you know, if we have enough evidence, we can take it to magistrate. The magistrate decide whether it's a passenger van or not. You know, that would require it to be found in compliance, you know? And a lot of times, you know, that's when people come up and say, hey, look, you know what? It isn't. Yeah, sure, you can come and look, it's not, there's no toilet in it, you know? But, anyway.
So no.
Our, our recreation vehicles registered, would the state differ than a passenger van? Would they have to have a different kind of license?
They have a license, but they're probably registered.
I mean, license plate, you know, when you register your car, your car's a car.
But on your title would show a certain type.
Title.
So I'm sure there's like an RV or...
Isn't it based on tonnage?
Well, there is tonnage-based registration, but I don't know if there's a specific RV.
But that's to my point, we, you know, I don't, my, that's my point, can we say, show us your paper, you know? Show us your, can we, I don't think we, that's my point, we, I don't know if we can force people to show us the registration of their vehicle.
Just a thought, just a thought. I mean, let's keep it simple. And we worry about RV, and we say we do not allow RVs. Okay? So that in itself stops the Clark Griswold and Uncle Eddie's thing coming in. If we sense there is an issue, obviously, awnings, drains for the tank and things like that, that would indicate it is an RV, then we could probably approach it that way through special magistrate or code. But in the absence of that, if it looks just like your neighbor's Sprinter, 233 inches, we don't see otherwise, it would probably never be a problem anyway. But, you know, to me, if you're still saying we don't allow RVs, and it ends up being an RV, then it's an unlawful vehicle. But in the absence of, you know, those other pieces that make it an RV, I wouldn't even think too much about that.
I think that we should just...
Hold on one second, Commissioner Patron was waiting patiently.
That's okay. I'm just saying, I think there's probably something on the title that would, I know like with boats, say a sailboat, a canoe, or whatever, so there might be something referenced on their title that would...
But I don't know how we use that. Like, can a special magistrate order that the title be, you know, that's what, that's kind of the same thing I was getting, I don't think we can.
But it's kind of like...
Those referees would say, here, take a look.
It's kind of like akin to when we have building permit issues, and we have reasonable leave, you have your circumstantial evidence, it works being done without a permit, and a magistrate typically asks, do you mind if the building official comes in and sees? And they either say yes, or they say no, and...
He considers that, he considers that answer...
Well, I don't know if he considers that as evidence, but, you know, we're always, always trying to try to resolve an issue, and sometimes people who don't, they don't understand what it is that they need to do until they get to a hearing or something. You see a lot of people who, who don't realize they're in violation, they didn't really take the notices, the notices or take it seriously. Well, now then they come to a hearing, and they're like, well, jeez, that's all I need to do? Yeah, here, here's my registration, it's just, there's no toilet. Or, yeah, here's, here's, come and take a look, all I did was, you know, replace it at interior door, or something like that, I don't know. So, but you can't, you know, write a code like that. So you, you write the code, you already have the prohibition on RVs, you know, you write the code that says, you know, this length or this height, or park this way, and then that's where we start.
Commissioner Marshall, you had something to say, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
No, that's okay. I, I took her thunder for a second. I, I just think, you know, we can talk about this thing all night long. I think we give direction to the administration. Here's the things, the consensus would be, let's do 233 if that's the case at this point. And we revisit it later if, if we see something else is happening, or, and then just, let's just move on. If we, if the administration thinks that we can sort of enforce what my suggestion about having them back in as opposed to, I realize that there may be U-shaped driveways that, you know, the thing has to sit sideways, or there is a picture that I've seen with a, with a, one of these vans that's behind a fence, you can't even see it unless you really were looking for it. It's behind a fence, it's, but it's sitting parallel to the street. I, I think that we just give the basic tools to code and let them do their job, and not interfere with, you know, just give them basic tools, 233 if that's the number that we come up with, and they can't be an RV.
Yeah, but I think the play, the other issue for me, just, and I don't know if people is, is, I think it's to simplify it, there has to be a limit on the length, we don't want people parking school buses, right, in their driveways. And, and where these are. So I personally, if you can fit them on your driveway, I, I kind of don't have a problem with it, but I do have a problem with the scenario I described, which is somebody parking it next to your neighbor's fence and it's sticking up above the fence. So I think it's, it's location and, and the length, just to try and simplify it. I guess the thing, I think the administration, as they try and craft something, needs to keep in mind is, again, though, if we're gonna say you can't park these, it's gonna be hard to craft, right? Because if we're gonna say you can't park these on the street, for example, are we gonna say that these can't be parked on the street? And if we say a 233-inch vehicle can't be parked on the street, again, as much as I don't like the SS Bigfeller, like, we can't, we're not gonna prevent people from parking their cars on the street. If we, if we prevented street parking, we would have a problem in the city. So we can't do that, so are we prepared, or we need to think about whether we're going to, or can we just say these Sprinter vans, however they are defined, cannot be parked on the street? Or do we want to allow them on the street? So maybe that's a discussion. Commissioner Long?
Well, instead of locking it into just dealing with the Sprinter van, you know, as a separate ordinance, I might suggest to go look at those issues you brought up. Parking specifically in a roadway, or a driveway, I should say, probably more important because it also deals with cars, trucks, everything else. And I think we can all agree that there's a property on Sample Road right before the bridge, there are duplex that has trucks and...
Boats.
Two trucks, boats, junk all over the place, you know, parked in the grass, in the swale, after half the time on sidewalk, I hope we all know what I'm talking about, that we can't do anything. And is that the type of Lighthouse Point our residents want, to allow that type of thing? Even if it was a brand-new Lexus sitting there in the middle of the lawn, you know, with grass growing up and around it. So to me, you brought up a very valid point about where these things park, and we do have problems with on-street parking, especially around the cul-de-sacs, which typically have smaller driveways because they're cut, and typically don't have the circular driveways. But, you know, maybe consider, and I think this would take some time and some heavy thinking and research probably on staff, but how do we best enforce something like that, where, where do all these vehicles go in a safe manner that doesn't affect the neighbors and everything else? And that would solve your problem as well.
And I don't think you'd want to put, whatever you all say these things cost, I don't think you'd want to leave them in the street all night anyway, on the whole. I don't think it would be a problem that much, but I definitely think we should say they stay in the driveway, not in the street.
And maybe a way, and I don't know if we're, maybe, it sounds like we might be wrapping this up, but one of the ways to define it maybe is, and I don't know how many, how many seats are in the darn thing, right? I mean, can you do it that way? I, and I leave that just as a, just as a thought when somebody tries to craft that. But my two biggest issues are where these things are, again, no, no aversion to it, if it's parked in your driveway, if you've got room for it, it's parked in your driveway, I don't have a big aversion to it as long as it's of reasonable length as yet to be determined.
233.5, I think we kind of have a consensus.
I think we can agree with that, and then...
But even though the pickup trucks are bigger than that?
That's the problem.
A whole-size crew cab, and I don't know what exactly you drive, that's all, but...
I don't know how big the SS Bigfeller is.
Bigger than that.
235 or 450.
That, that is a, that is, these are, I don't know what these, what you call these things, that you're, you're talking, nothing, make it about your truck, I'm sorry. It's a, it's a, it is still a, a, a personal vehicle. These are personal vehicles in a way, but they can carry a lot more people than your trucks. So I don't know, that's, that's where the hard part is gonna be, is...
But they're also a big box, which is different than the trucks. So I think, you know, from visual perspective, that way.
But I mean, we don't want, maybe we do, but I just, I don't see us right now during this discussion preventing people from parking their cars on the street, as much as a pain as it can be. We've all driven down streets in the city where there's construction going on, and that's a whole different discussion. But we don't want to inadvertently, I don't think anybody up here inadvertently wants to limit people parking their personal vehicles on the street through this discussion, so...
So could we all make a suggestion that we move this forward as consensus to change to 233.5? You know, we still already have the no-RV, so don't even have to touch that piece. But for a further discussion later, separate and distinct, which could tap into this, put you back on it, or be a separate ordinance to deal with the actual parking location and such.
What does the administration think about bifurcating? I kind of feel like, I guess we're biting, I started by saying, let's bite off small pieces, so I remember what I said, but feel like if we're gonna swallow the elephant, we might want to talk about the location at the same time. That's my thought.
I think they should be in the driveways.
Only?
But my question is...
Yeah, not in the street.
How does this relate to other issues with other vehicles that are parked on, you know, the side of the house and things like that? Because it's not, you know, if it's not an RV, if it's not a boat, you have no issue with a truck or a car parked on the side of your yard right next to your neighbor's house. I mean, so that's...
Mr. Loviski wanted to say something?
Soon, we're bringing back Part 1 and Part 2 of the code rewrite, and we have addressed that in there with a consultant to eliminate parking on, on the grass that those, I know exactly what house we're talking about, by the bridge, 36th Street. So we've, we've identified that in, in the code rewrite. So that will come back, and we'll, we'll highlight that when we go through all the changes.
So if you have a 233 van, to summarize, a 233 van, or whatever the number is that you, you know, you have...
33.5.
And it's gotta be in the driveway, and I, you know, if you can...
And no bathrooms and no kitchens.
If it can be backed in as opposed to pulled in, I don't know that we can put that in there, but, you know, it's a safety factor for everybody. But we're only talking about 19 things here.
Right.
You know, let's just...
Yeah, but we're trying to get ahead of it. I mean, we're trying to get out of it.
I, I absolutely understand, and you've got pickup trucks that are uglier and bigger than what you're talking about, a, and I'm not talking about the mayors, because this is kind of like...
I was about to say, I can only think of one, but...
We can sit here and debate it back and forth forever, so let's...
There's some duly pickups, there's some duly pickups out there that are flat-out ugly, and they're a lot longer than what we're talking about. And, and I just, I don't see where it's a big deal. It's 233, you gotta park in the driveway, and you can't park it on the grass.
Does the city administration think they can execute on that?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Is there, is there, just to be clear, is there, is there a consensus on that?
Yes.
All right. All right.
233.5.
Moving on, agenda item number two, discussion regarding hedge heights. Mr. Loviski.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Commissioners, you, you recall you raised the hedge heights on the side of the house from six feet to eight feet a couple of years ago. But, um, we had a, we, we cited a resident on 31st Avenue. He had a hedge in the front of his house around 15 feet. It was a beautiful hedge. It was, it was maintained very well, about 15 feet tall. And he was cited for having a hedge too tall. He came back to the City Commission here and said, you know, I'd like to keep my hedge. It's beautiful. And the, and the commission, and I know we have two new commissioners on, on the board now, but the, um, the, the commission was, let's look at it, let's look what other cities are doing, and let's see if we want to adjust the heights of our hedges. So it just kind of never came up again. And we're, again, we're tightening up some loose ends. So there's a chart in here that shows where other cities, uh, the height of the hedges. And it's very self-explanatory. I'm not gonna go through it. Except Fort Lauderdale, they have like 10 foot in the front, 10 foot on the side, 10 foot on the rear in a dry lot, and then two and a half feet, um, in the rear, 10 feet of a water lot. And then after that, it can go, go higher. So it just, it, it's coming back. Is the commission interested in changing the regulations related to hedge heights? We had one resident come to the city, again, several years ago, and hasn't really come up since then. So we're just trying to put this to rest. Do you wanna look at it? You wanna, you wanna debate it? You wanna change the ordinance or move on?
Let's kick us off on this one.
Oh, I'll only say, I'm all right with the way it stands, but we need to enforce it on everybody. I mean, if we're gonna have it, we need to enforce it. If we wanna change it, we can change it. But however we change it, we need to, uh, you know, we need to say that if somebody's gotta cut their hedge down, then the next guy does too.
Commissioner Long? I'm happy the way it is. And I agree with Sandy. I think, you know, bigger issues we have in the city is the enforcement of, of it. And, and I think the bigger concern we have now, since the state law, I think, went in last year, that you no longer can anonymously complain. And our residents don't want to call on their neighbor, because they like the neighbor, but generally they don't like the hedge, and they don't want to get it, they're non-confrontational. And that then falls on our code enforcement to do what has to be done. And, you know, we recently raised it to eight feet, and a lot of that was for greater privacy of two-story houses, as well as allowing some of the center console boats. And I, I kind of led that. But I think what we have now is good, because it still provides privacy on the sides. I think we always have to be concerned of how the city aesthetics are gonna look. And if you have Fort Lauderdale, some just really ugly, just 10-foot hedges, that not only is a crime issue, I guess, from crime prevention, it's a negative. But I'm happy the way it is here.
All right, that's two-nos.
And I, I totally agree.
That means we're done? Doesn't matter what we think.
For the record, I, on my particular street, we have two houses that are, I don't know, we call the one a mosque, because the thing is about 90 feet in the air at least, and they got a house built right next to it that's gonna be 90 feet. So if there's a 10 or 12 foot, and I'm not suggesting 12 feet, but if there's a 10-foot, uh, in between those two houses, you're not gonna see it anyway, from anywhere. The, the issue that I see is that the guy that came here and complained, his, his hedge was old, and I think if I remember correctly at the meeting, and I wasn't sitting up here, I was sitting out there, was old and it would have destroyed it if he would have cut it, and I think that was the story that he gave. So then it just kind of died. And it just, you know. But if you have a house that's to the limit, 30 feet or however high the house can be, and you have a little rancher next to it, all right, wouldn't you, in the rancher, wanna have a hedge, if it were your hedge, high enough to hide that they can't look down into your house? I mean, that's the issue that I, I seem to fight with in thinking about the hedge height thing. And then, if you leave it as it is, how many people out there, and I'm not asking the staff to do, you know, they're not gonna go out there with a tape measure and measure all these, how many people are gonna be upset and have to cut their hedges because now they're more than eight feet tall? We have a spot on 45th and Lighthouse Point Drive. There's, there's a, a pumping station thing. The hedge is 10 feet tall, right on the corner. And, and it's not eight feet tall, it's, it's at least 10 feet tall, because it's twice as big as I am. So, you know, that's, that's us or the county that's allowing that. So now, we're gonna tell somebody they have to cut their hedge when we're not doing exactly what we, you know. I, I just, I just have a problem with, you know, the regulation in the first place. I, and as, as Mr. Dunne who said, you know, it's, there was other reasons why the hedges were certain height. I can understand, maybe in the front, it's different than the sides. I don't see, and also close to a, uh, the water, it should be lower, so that people can see. But along where the, the homes are, I don't, I don't see where 10 feet's a, a bad thing. So, that's my opinion.
You know, in reality, when we made this ordinance or set these things up, Ross also commented that it was for safety and security purposes. He didn't want the great big tall hedges because of that, that he felt it was safer to keep them down a little bit lower. And also, if somebody still has a really tall hedge, they've been out of compliance with our code for years, so shame on them.
Yeah, it does get back into the whole compliance piece. But also, you know, like, ever you're talking like a dry lot and having 10-foot hedges, if I have a little ranch-style house, which I do, I would also be concerned about the lack of sunshine and light that I now no longer have by my pool, that I can't sit out in the sun because it's being blocked, you know, a lot sooner than it normally would. Because the houses aren't gonna be on your back property line, but that hedge would be, and be 10, 12 feet. And the other problem, and I will say this from when my mom was alive, at her house, they had a neighbor, and she was afraid, because the neighbor was slightly imbalanced, to call code, until it got to a point where it got up into the power lines. And then FPNL got involved. So you're talking, what, 12-plus feet at least? And sure enough, when Code finally had to come out there, he would never, ever cut the side that he has to maintain on my mother's property at that point. It was, it was a large ficus. Created all sorts of problems, and a lot of turmoil for my mom, because she did not want to get involved, but, you know, this guy then paints the fence that happened to be in the middle of it too, pink, threw all sorts of toys. And I was just, the guy was just off his rocker. But the big issue we have is people do not enforce, or I shouldn't say enforce, they don't maintain the other side of the property, especially on dry lots. They just don't do it. They don't cut their side, their lawn guys do the inside of their property, they don't go on the outside, because then you also get in the issue of, am I allowed on that person's property? So, I mean, at 10 feet, that gets pretty difficult to maintain. Eight feet can be a little more easily maintained, or even six. But, you know, that's, and these are discussions that have happened way in the past as well. I don't know about Lee Owen is there, but, you know, the fact is there is an issue with.
We have, we have now, that happened in, what, 2019, I believe, because it was when the mayor ran for reelection. And that's when the guy came here. So now you have had this thing on hold now for three, four years. So the hedges obviously are.
They grow.
Grown. So now you're gonna go tell the people, they gotta cut them down, even though we allowed them because of nothing being done because, for whatever reason.
But that's not true. The code is still the code. If we're gonna think about looking at, but, and I think they have been enforcing it sporadically, based usually on complaints. But, I mean, the code's a code, just because someone doesn't follow it.
This is my, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt here, because this is my crop, this is, this is, I keep saying it. The commission, respectfully, enforcing the code is this man's job. Drafting the code is our job. So the commission has not, not done anything. But we had a discussion with it, we raised it with the boats, but, and I'm not, you know, you're still pretty new at this, so I'm not saying it was you, but I don't, I don't want there to be an implication out there that the commission hasn't done anything on this, because we do not, I mean this respectfully, it's just a separation of powers thing, I keep repeating it, we do not enforce the code. We draft it. And, you know, I just, like, and it's, and I'm not, I don't envy the job. It's hard enough to draft it, enforcing it's a whole different ballgame. But we all have difficult parts of our job, but, um, just wanted to get that out there, Mayor.
Do, I just, sorry to, to interject, but I would just say you're 100% correct. Just my biggest thing, and we've seen it before, and I've seen other folks that have sat in this position, when we make a code and we go out and our code department, which does a very good job, goes out to enforce it, and then this room doesn't look like this room does right now, and there's a thousand people in here, and everyone's standing, and everyone turns to the man, or a person sitting in this position, and they look around the man or woman sitting there going, well, we didn't really mean it like that. And I've watched it. I've, I've sat up here and done it. I've actually looked over at the person. So I just wanna make sure that when it's time to go enforce it, which I'm perfectly happy doing, and our code department does a great job doing, that if this room fills up, then everybody goes and goes, no, 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 this is, this is fine. Everybody gets their three minutes, but this is what we've gone for. And so that's, that's all I ask. And, because we all have a singular voice, and that's the reason for the discussion, because I want all of you to help us make these decisions, so that when the room does fill up, that we could all say we're united front, we made this with the best intentions, the city at the city's best interest at heart, and that's what we vote for.
Are you, are, so are you, I mean, you're the one that gets to deliver the bad news. So, and, and with Mr. Loviski and, and everybody else, are you comfortable with the eight feet?
I think that there's positive and negative to both of them. But ultimately, in the end, it, it, each, each position, to Commissioner Long's point, he would like more sun in his pool, someone else says, I don't want him looking into me while I'm in my shower. I mean, it's, it, it's so hard, you know? And then, and then we're having to regulate neighbor versus neighbor. Again, something again Commissioner Long brought up. I don't wanna put, we don't, one thing I dislike is that when the city gets in a neighbor-on-neighbor dispute, to figure it out, and we've done that before. So I think in, we should, we have a code, we'll be more than happy, Code, Code knows what the code is, we'll go out, we'll put it out there, we'll enforce all the aspects of it. But if the room fills up, just remo, just remember that that's perfect, you know, I'm good with doing what you, with the direction the commission puts out for us.
And it's out, go ahead, Commissioner Marshall.
May, may I suggest that, so it, it kind of, if, if your house is 50 feet long, uh, the hedge can be 50 feet long, but it can't extend beyond your, you know, your house. If, if you want privacy in your house, from a house that's looking down on you, and it can't extend so that then, as Commissioner Long has said, you know, I don't wanna have a 10-foot thing next to my pool because of the sun. So allowing it to, to divide the houses, but then, because we do reduce it down when we in, on water lots, that you can only have, they can only be two feet.
That was a big debate, right? As I recall, it was long before we were, any of us were up there, but that was.
That was for the views.
So there's ways to do that. Maybe the administration could look at that and come back to us with, with some alternative to, you know, satisfying everybody, so that if somebody that has this hedge, maybe the room will only half fill up, instead of completely fill up.
I know there's a lot of water lots that the hedges go, high hedges go all the way to the water. And the neighbors are happy with it. Right across the canal from me, like all four or five houses, they have great big tall hedges. They would probably have apoplexy both sides, when they tell me to put it down to three feet. But it's, I like it at three feet, because I think, you know, you get to, to see it. But some of the older houses that have been there forever, they have like Sleeping Beauty's hedge between them, going right down to the seawall.
I think when the, when the houses change hands, that's when the, you know, that, that's when you get into an issue, when, when, you know, you and I are neighbors, and we're fine with the hedge being the way it is, then we get a new guy that comes and moves in, then we have a problem.
Let's leave it.
Yeah, and one thing, though, that we both have to think of, so if you build a new house, you're probably gonna raise it three feet off where it sits now. And that is your nor, now normal ground level. And when you put your landscaping in, you go six feet from your level. That six feet could be equaling eight to nine feet, um, on that ranch-style house. So you're getting your 10 feet anyway in that. Problem is, if you have a two-story house, they're gonna be looking down, no matter how high that hedge is. And if you have a hedge that high, it's under somebody's foundation ripping it up. So, just something to think about, because we do have, you know, the different variations of new house, old house, um, for elevation.
I, I, I actually hear Commissioner Marshall's, please is the wrong word, but I'll use it, but advocacy for some privacy on the sides. I, I, I feel like that, on the sides only, that, that a little more height, people are looking for the privacy. Like if somebody walked, you know, I don't think there's much you can do about this, you know, the 50-foot high house and stuff like that, because I don't, I don't intend to go that. But I, I would be open to, to some flexibility on the, on the, on the sides, and potentially the rear, but it doesn't sound like there's a consensus to tinker with it. So, um, I think, I think we're gonna, we're gonna move on.
We'll look forward to the room being full.
Okay, so moving on, agenda item number three, report on synthetic turf. Our planning director, Mr. Hickey, is he on? Is he here?
Yeah, he's on.
He's on, he's on Zoom, okay.
I'm here virtually tonight. Hi, everybody. How's everyone doing?
Hey, Jim.
Good. So I'm just gonna walk through. I know that Ms. Sobel's there, and Mr. Miller, I've actually worked with this Miller in a couple other jurisdictions, so, um, and it is an evolving kind of process, and it is good to look at it every once in a while and just make sure we're doing the correct processes, that we have the correct information. I think you have a sample in front of you that you can all look at while I, while I walk through kind of the discussions. So just to, just to clarify, we did go through and identify a number of the, the points that were brought up through the email of Ms. Sobel. One is the, the maximum height. This is a pretty standard height through, throughout other cities. Really, it's a balance between having it look like natural sod versus having it look like, you know, a putting green, right? You don't want something that, that's that, not, that's not as thick as, um, traditional sod and traditional grass. So that's kind of where that comes from. The other thing, too, is it does allow for greater permeability through as you go through. We have approved it at putting green height as well in certain areas. I think we do have a couple in the city where that was put in. And again, it was the same material, but it was used in a, basically in a shorter, shorter height. So just walking through, and we just wanted to give you samples of what other communities, Hillsborough, Surfside West, and Miami Shores, they all have the, the similar standard. As far as the, the GC, and I know this has become an issue with residents, because of course, I don't know if it's generally known that a permit's required to go through this process. So what happens is they go, they get a, you know, a turf person, the turf person comes out, puts this, puts the material in, and low and behold, the material's not correct. That, I know that's been confusing or actually unnerving to some of the residents, because now they have to come back out and change that. We, we do require in the code now that it requires a general contractor or landscape architect. And really, it's twofold. The first is to make sure that that material is put down by someone who understands how it should be done, and someone's there to inspect to make sure that's done. For example, if you were to use this in a soccer field or something like that, you know, you have to make sure that those areas are clamped down, because they do come up. It's like a, it's like a rug. If it's not put down properly, it becomes a, becomes a trip hazard. The real reason why we look to do this, and this is something that we actually have worked with, our, we have landscape architects license in our, our firm, and they've actually looked at this. And it's not just the artificial turf, but it's actually the substrate of what's underneath it. You can't just take out the existing sod, put it on top of dirt, and expect it to function and work like natural sod. You have to have a substrate under there that takes some of that water and absorbs it through. That's really the, the reason and the, the issue why the additional review is required. Trying not to go through everything. Prohibited in the, in the right-of-way and swales, it's specifically in there, and Daniel Mantal, who works with me as well, we had a discussion with Kerry Winningham. And I, the issue becomes around what's allowed per the county. The Broward County Environmental Protection does not classify turf, artificial turf, as green and growing and permeable. So what that does is that actually reduces the water quality or drainage credits that the community gets. I think the other issue, and this is just me as a planner, you know, we had 11 inches of rain last weekend. You wanna make sure that those swales are working and functioning. of rain last weekend, you want to make sure that those swales are working and functioning properly, and those were really designed to have real grass sod on the side of the road to be able to absorb some of that. And I think, you know, regardless of that, we really need to look at that and make sure that what's out there is actually going to be permeable and absorb some of this rainwater as it comes through. The other issue with it, too, is the actual filtration. So, sod actually takes some of that water, you know, it's road, it has rubber, it has oil, it has all those things, and that gets filtered through that existing sod. So, the water that actually goes through the natural sod is naturally filtered. Depending on what type of material is used for artificial, that's not going to be the same there. So, and I think there was a letter from the city engineer in the backup. Now, one of the things you can look at, and there was a couple of policy directions that we suggested, not that we're directing you all to look forward to, that what we're asking for is for you guys to provide us some input, is looking at, potentially looking at different turf heights. I think the issue becomes is you have, and we are seeing that now, we're having many different types of manufacturers come in, and we want to have a standard that's across the board. You know, if Ford manufacturing comes in with an artificial turf, and then Nissan or whoever, I'm picking cars, so I don't want to pick on landscape contractors, you want to have a standard that we can follow and enforce throughout the city. It is becoming a more popular item, and we know that, and we are constantly out there looking at ways to improve and ways to make sure that we're incorporating all of the information and all of the latest trends. I think the one thing I do want to stress, too, is the proposed artificial turf that's in your code now does have some natural fibers in it, so it does allow for some of that filtration, but of course, nothing's as good as the natural sod that's there. And some cities have a process that you could go through where the, you know, if someone would come in, for example, the one you have in front of you, we could bring that through one of the boards in the city and have them review that against what's currently in the code and see whether that would be something that would be allowed, and basically start to have kind of a catalog of potential sod that's allowed in the city. So, I've talked enough. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, and that concludes the conversation I have.
All right. Commissioners, discussion. Let's kick this one off. I'm going to pick on you, Ms. Patron down there.
Oh, geez.
Anything?
Um, you know, I think it's just like we said, it's changed a lot. It's not the old green carpet you could buy at Home Depot, and, I mean, this is really nice stuff, and it's, I've seen it in some applications in the city, and it looks beautiful. So, I think it's something we should consider. I think the height maybe is a concern. I mean, I have little dogs. I think, you know, an inch and three-quarters, they might have a problem, so maybe we should look at some, talk to these people and get their recommendations.
Commissioner Marshall?
Two things I have. I agree that, if, in fact, we allowed in the swales, not so much the percolation or anything else, but if, in fact, the swale belongs to us, and we had to, you know, dig up a piece of pipe, and now we're going to tear up somebody's AstroTurf, then we end up with a whole lot more cost to the city as opposed to there being grass there. I think it should be, you know, shouldn't be in the swales, it should just flow naturally into it. We don't have that many swales, I don't think, anymore, anyway. A lot of people, they've kind of gone away, anyway. The other thing is, one of the things I'd like to see us consider is on water lots, not dry lots, but water lots, allowing as much AstroTurf or turf, whatever you want to call it, in their backyards. Two things that that does, it stops the canals getting grass clippings because the guys are blowing the grass into the canals, and the other thing it does is, just aesthetically, you know, the water will run, and you won't have fertilizer or anything else going into the canals, you'll have clean water running into the canals because it's coming off the AstroTurf. In fact, it's graded that way, and you won't have the grass clippings going into the canals, which I think is a concern, and there's been concerns, during our campaign, we got a letter from a lady complaining about the grass clippings being blown into the, what do you call it? You know, they're the two things that, other than that, I think it's, you know, it's come a long way, and I think then we should allow ourselves, the planners or whoever, to revisit this thing once again, like I said before, on a periodic basis because of the change, the way things are going, and I'm sure these guys can tell you that it's changed today from three weeks ago or four weeks ago or a month ago. You know, it keeps evolving, like your phone, you know, you bought a phone, and it's already outdated once you get it home. So, that's all I have.
Commissioner Patron, any thoughts on the swale issue?
I think it should be more limited to the backyards. I think, Mr. Commissioner Marshall brought up some very, very good points.
Right now, it's allowed in the front, right now, it's allowed in the front yards. My reluctance, it's allowed, it's a percentage of your permeable area, so I think it's allowed in the front. It's expressly not allowed in the swale right now, but I think it's allowed in the front yards technically now. Commissioner Johnson?
I, I like the look of it. When I see a house that has it, it looks clean, it looks nice. It keeps, not just in the backyard, but in the front yard, they blowing all the stuff in the street, and it keeps looking nicer. The ones that I looked at, where'd they go to?
Commissioner Johnson.
I have them all.
You still have a truck in its free box.
I can see what they, what they're saying about the shorter one, if you have the dog and all, but, I mean, looking, looking at both of them, I would see, I mean, I think it's kind of neat, the shorter one, it has like little brown things in it, so it looks, it looks like real grass. And with so many people in our city that go away all summer and stuff, and they don't have to worry about coming back and finding all the dead patches on their lawn, and so I don't, I don't really have a problem with it. On the swale, maybe not, because cars park on it, and I don't know consistently if cars parked on it, whether it would hurt it or not. These folks would probably be able to tell us more than that, but I think that we should go with what the experts now say works and change what we have.
Commissioner Long?
I'm not sure really, we kind of have a lot of discussions going on here, because we're really looking at the report that we received here, and just a couple issues let's clarify is that, yes, it's allowed in the backyard already and parked in the front. Our other codes reflect the fact that all water needs to be maintained and held on your property. So, having runoff going in the canals is against our code anyway, so, you know, that's an issue that we, again, have to deal with from either code enforcement or zoning or planning.
You can help it when it rains.
It's a grade, how they design the grade, so it has, you have to retain the water on the property, and that's county-wide everywhere. So, you know, we got to look at there, I think there's some valid points about the fertilizer and things like that, especially in the backyard. I think the question of height, that was a little surprising to me because I know like St. Augustine grass tends to be about three inches before you should cut it as a maximum. You should only cut like one-third off. So, 1.75 to me didn't seem too long, and we did when setting these rules, kind of selected a fairly well-regarded, high-tech, at the time, it was just a few years ago, turf that was thick that had the, you know, the look of regular sod. So, if we lower it, I wouldn't lower it too much, I wouldn't do the putting green piece. The swale piece, I think there's just too much against that from a drainage, and all new properties being developed, Commissioner Marshall has to have swales put in now. And we're talking about that's the sinking thing. So, we're getting more and more of those to help with this issue. My concern with the turf has always been the percolation rate, and that has changed dramatically with the new turf, but still, when you're talking about the substrate, you know, a lot of times it's hard-packed, it doesn't pull in the water like you would with the regular dirt, and especially in that area of the swale area, it's just not going to do what we need it to do and from what the county does. So, as far as who's the person to install it or to sign off on it, I don't think that should be changed. I think if we talk about lowering the turf, it's a little bit, you know, we're not going to have the putting green turf, and then still no swales, so I think those were the big issues that were talked about.
Um, my two cents, I, I'm, it sounds like we don't have a consensus on the swales, but it sounds like the swale issue is like much more complicated than we're going to be able to get into tonight. So, personally, I would, I would be open to the swales if, I hear the problems particularly about if it gets digged up, I think that's probably the base problem. I'd be more open to it if we could get confidence that it doesn't screw up the credits or however that works, but it doesn't sound like there's a consensus on there, so I'll focus on the other things. I thought a lot about the who installs it, and I, I've had it, I've recalled throughout the years, I've had a lot of people say that landscape architects just don't even install this stuff, so it's just like a redundant, it doesn't even frankly make sense. I don't know if that's true or not, but I had that comment made to me, and I guess, I guess it's very valid to say you want somebody competent installing it, but we're still going, no one's talking about not requiring a permit. So, if, you could still have the greatest installer in the world who's not a JC, it's still got to pass inspection and be confirmed that it's, you know, proper. So, I would be open to allowing a more, you know, insured, I guess this is a question I have, there's no licensure for installing this stuff, correct? Okay. So, as long as they have appropriate insurance, I would be open to allowing others according to its proper installation and accordance with whatever new code we call it, but so I'd be open to that because I feel like there's a backstop there with the inspection and making sure it's inspected properly. As for the height and the weight, I have artificial turf under the current code in my backyard. I don't even frankly know how high it is. I'm assuming it's whatever, the one and three-quarters or whatever it is.
Code enforcement's going to your house.
It was done, I got a permit, it was inspected, I swear. And I guess the weight, the weight intrigues me a little bit because, to me, weight equates quality, and I could be totally, I respect, and I mean, I say a lot of stupid stuff up here and get in trouble all the time. When I feel that stuff, it doesn't feel substantial. So, but I'm the first to admit, technology advances, and maybe it used to be much heavier, and now it can be high-quality and lighter. So, what I'd like to see is, if someone could email me, it sounds like it's going to be these gentlemen here, like someplace where the shorter turf is installed, just so I can scope it out. So, I'd be open to it, but I, I'd like to see it in application first, and those are my thoughts. So, it sounds like, it sounds like we have a consensus on most everything except the swale issue. It sounds like you're not, respectfully, Commissioner Long, you're not 100% on board with the height?
Well, I just don't want to go to a putting green, yeah, if it's there. And yeah, there's two different fills you're going to put in here, you got the rubber beads or the sand, you know, depending on its application, and I think that, you know, the weight's going to have different things with it, but, and from the landscape architect, I just want to make sure that it's not some guy who's going, "Yeah, I can do that," and he's just dumping some sand, rolling it out, because I do know some people have had that problem in the city, that it looks like they just rolled sand out and dumped it on there, it looks like crap in about six months. You know, then they complain and get nowhere. So, I don't know whether being insured or anything else, but however that works, I'm not tied to that. I just want to make sure that we have a quality install, because, you know, there are residents out there, maybe they used to live in Pompano and barely made it to Lighthouse Point, and are trying to save a buck or two, that might not go the right route and ultimately get bamboozled by Cousin Eddie and his.
And his RV.
His RV.
It's an RV there.
All right. Is there any further discussion on this? Does the city administration feel where it has? Mr. Hickey, do you feel like you have what you need?
Yes, I think I, I think we have enough information to move on. Just a point of clarification, I just wanted to clarify, and probably I misspoke. So, the plan itself is landscape architect or engineer, the installer would be currently, because it's through a building permit, would be through under a general contractor. So, that's the current kind of process that happens. So, if I misspoke, it's my fault on my end.
Okay. I had people mention the landscape architect part to me before and questioned that. All right. Administration, you get on that?
We're good.
Okay. All right, breakneck speed. Moving on, discussion on a utility box wrap program. Ms. Sims?
Good evening. Back in 2018, the commission discussed the possibility of having utility boxing or box program. Some residents had brought it up to the commission and expressed interest. During that time, some research was done by administration, and the cost was expected to be around $9,600 for the program. That program would include five large traffic signal boxes and one small box that's located in the city that are owned by Broward County Traffic Engineering. There are some other boxes in the city that are owned by FPNL and AT&amp;T, and we're not allowed to wrap those boxes. To have such boxes wrapped, we would have to have permits pulled through Broward County. Broward County does have guidelines that we would have to meet. We would also have to go out for design of whatever potential artwork we would want on those boxes. Some examples are in your backup from the city of Bolton Manners. We would also most likely have to have the artwork signed and sealed by a PE, and there would, of course, be a potential cost to the program, whether it be the $9,600, it could be more, it could be less. We would have to get some prices, especially from other cities that are our neighboring cities, Pompano, Deerfield Beach, Bolton Manners, they all have art on their boxes now.
I'm going to move over here for discussion. Ladies first over here. Commissioner Johnson, any thoughts?
I love them. I think they're awesome, but I don't know if we afford them. If we can afford them, I say go for them, especially the ones with the little foxes on it, we can put it right in front of the box. But, I mean, they, they look, they look fantastic, so we just have to talk to the pledgeet man and see if there's.
Yeah, I think my frustration is, you know, it's a lot of money for not a lot of wow when it comes to where our biggest needs are, which is FPNL. I mean, we've got some signal things, boy, we've got five boxes and one small one, five large traffic, and a small box, and, you know, I do love them, but God, I wish we could get FPNL or AT&amp;T on board and say, "Hey, why don't you," you know, you're looking at 29th and federal, you know, it's like three boxes there or whatever, and they're ugly, no doubt about it. But I like what Pompano's done, I think Fort Lauderdale's done some really neat stuff where they're really using old-time photographs and stuff like that, talking about the history of their city and some other things. There's a lot that can be done. You can add color and distinctiveness to it, but, you know, that $9,600, is that, you know, do you still think that's valid now, or?
Well, that was four years ago.
Yeah, but I know like car wraps, you know, I think their prices have come down, it's the same thing.
Right, and that may be the same because they've become more popular.
Yeah, so, I mean, I say we continue to look into it, but wow, I would love to get FPNL to do a pilot program for us.
Commissioner Marshall?
If we're, if FPNL is going to, and this is a question for a solicitor, if FPNL is going to do this underground program that eventually will happen, can we require them to have, because they put the transformers on the ground, correct?
Yeah.
That they have to be wrapped? That's a start, anyway.
I don't think we can.
They're like a million of them.
Yeah.
And they put it where they want it.
Yeah.
And there are people's lawns, everybody might not want it wrapped, and I don't think we're even.
We have less control over that aspect of a right-of-way than we would like.
Yeah.
With the telecommunications and utilities and whatnot, through state statute.
I don't really have an opinion, actually. One way or the other, it doesn't, you know, I don't even see.
You can call a vote, and I can make you have an opinion.
I don't even see them, you know, you see them, but you don't see them.
Yeah, that's fair.
I don't know. And then, the other thing is, when you're going down the road and you see something, you're trying to figure out what it's on it, that becomes a hazard to the driving because you're trying to figure out, "What the heck is that?" You know? So, I really don't. So I really don't have an opinion, you know, whatever.
It's something I would like to definitely explore. I think the pricing from four years ago, I think we're going to find it's come down a lot because wraps are very, very popular. Just, I just did a quick internet search, found three companies that do this, have nice preset designs, we don't need to go get an artist or anything, there's all sorts of different themes and foliage, obviously, things like that. I think I'd like to look into it. You know, obviously, $9,600 is a lot of money, but we might find out it's a, you know, four or $5,000 project or maybe even less. So I think, something I think we should pursue. They look nice.
That's a backup. I mean, are you even allowed to paint them?
We can wrap them in artificial turf.
Do that?
Get those guys to come back and score samples.
But I mean, is it even possible just to paint to get a neutral color? And secondly, I'm still trying to figure out what the box is on federal highway right by the Kentucky Fried Chicken and that bank.
Oh, that is a funky one.
I'm trying to figure, I don't know, I have the same way, I'm like, what is that? Looks like it's a mirror.
I'm a little torn on this one. I don't mind exploring it. My hesitation on exploring it is because city administration's got enough on their plate, and I mean that respectfully. Because I'm probably a no at the end of the day, if it's $9,600, just, I'm getting increasingly budget worried, I'm just going to be frank with everybody. So if it's $9,600, I'm probably a no. It's four or five grand, maybe I come around. But I just, I think about, you know, I drive over our bridge every day. I look at the rest of the parts of the city that need to be paid, and I'm like, beautifying our city is an important thing, don't get me wrong. I'd love to be able to do it, you know, I just think about all the other things that need to be done, and then I know $9,600 is, it is a lot of money, yet it isn't, but it just starts to add up. So I guess at the end of the day, if it's not a ton of work, I'm happy to try and figure out how much it's going to cost, but I'm probably.
Just call up somebody and ask them what it's going to cost.
These three websites, I'll be happy to take it on and get a rough vote.
You're on.
Just at least.
I'll make a motion.
You got an opinion all of a sudden.
Do that and go back to us with a more realistic cost.
So at least we know what we're calling it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, again, it's a nice to have, it's not a must have, but at $9,600.
But that's four years old.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, get something, even if we do two, the biggest, you know, biggest, ugliest ones, whatever.
So, yeah, I'm okay checking it out. I'm going to probably be a tougher sell on it than I want to be, but I'm just, just think of all the other things, unless the mayor's going to come surprise us come budget time.
Pleasantly surprise us come budget time.
Certainly wouldn't put it as a priority.
Yeah, that's my concern, so.
I think it's way, way down on the list.
Yeah, I got it, I got it. But beautifying, I mean, I say, that's why, because I do say beautifying as much of the other big infrastructure projects that we need to do, we can't lose sight of the beautification aspect of the city, and I try not to lose sight of that when we talk about these things. So I heard some rumblings over there from the city attorney administrator, was there something we need?
No, we were just saying, we think we got a consensus to look at it and back.
Okay, fair enough. All right. Consensus to investigate cost and hopefully we're pleasantly surprised, so we'll move on.
I'm still looking for the nice fence around the police lot. It's been turned down because people don't want to beautify the city, but if we ever want to put a few pennies in the beautifying it, we could get rid of the chain link fence there, but that's something for another day.
Noted. All right, moving on to agenda item number five, waive the bid process to purchase a 2022 Ford Explorer police vehicle using Florida Sheriff's Association contract, purchase related equipment and declare a police vehicle surplus. Police Chief Wagon.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, how are you tonight?
You haven't been dismissed, Mr. Silverstein?
The 2022-23 forfeiture budget, which you'll see at the commission meeting, was to include funds to purchase a 2023 Ford Explorer administrative vehicle and accessory emergency equipment. The new vehicle will replace high mileage vehicle that we have in our fleet, which has exceeded its useful life. I recently became aware of a new 2022 Ford Explorer that became available for purchase and will be available in August of 2022 from Duval Ford, which is one of the state vendors that has the Florida Sheriff's Association contract. The vehicle is available for $5,200 less than what we would pay for a 2023 Explorer on October 1st, three months later. Now, yes, it is a year older, but it's a brand new car with a 36,000 mile, three year warranty, and it would save us a significant amount of money to our forfeiture fund. The Florida Sheriff's Association contract provides the lowest national government pricing for these types of vehicles, and as I said, the pricing is from Duval Ford, which is the vendor that we have been using in recent years that has that contract bid award. Additionally, related emergency equipment for the new vehicle is being requested to come from forfeiture funds, will be purchased from Strobes or Us, which is our vendor that outfits our vehicles with emergency equipment. The total cost for the vehicle is $34,496. The emergency equipment from Strobes or Us is $2,587.77, and requesting federal forfeiture funds for the purchase of those two items, which are both approved equipment or items for expenditure for federal forfeiture funds. We're also requesting that we declare one police vehicle as surplus property. You should have a copy of the attachments in your commission package. The financial impact of the city is that the entire funds from this project will come from the forfeiture fund and not from the general fund or the capital budget. So I'm recommending that the city commission take the following action by motion, waive the bid process and authorize the purchase of one 2022 Ford Explorer administrative vehicle from Duval Ford at a cost of $34,496 from the Florida Sheriff's Association contract utilizing federal forfeiture funds. Also to waive the bid process and authorize the purchase of emergency equipment to outfit one administrative vehicle from Strobes or Us at a cost of $2,587.77 utilizing federal forfeiture funds, and also to declare a 2014 Ford Tourist, unit number 1403, the then-numbered specified on the agenda item, as surplus property.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. Commissioners, any questions or discussion for the chief's dying effort to guard his federal forfeiture funds, as I know he always tries to do?
When you say surplus property, does that mean it's going to be sold or just?
It'll be all.
Where has this Ford Tourist been? I haven't seen a 2014 Ford Tourist in 20 years, but.
No, we actually have two or three left in our fleet.
Really? Okay.
They're used for training, for the general staff going to and from court, as backup vehicles when other cars are in the garage or at Ford for warranty work and service work, and if there's a car accident and the cars are down for a while, there's always a need to have extra vehicles around.
That's like wild, that was maybe hidden behind bushes for a while and found it.
We still have a few, believe it or not.
Commissioner Johnson, any?
Not the old Crown Vicks, but the Ford Tourist.
A lot of people miss that, those.
All right, Commissioners, Commissioner Marshall and Commissioner Johnson, I think are satisfied. We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive the bid process to purchase one 2022 Ford Explorer administrative vehicle for $34,496 from the federal forfeiture funds, as well as the police, police, for $2,587.77 from Strobes or Us, also from the federal forfeiture funds, as well as declaring the 2014 Ford Tourist, police unit 1403, as surplus property.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Chief.
We've been here now almost two hours, and that's the first time we voted.
I know, I was just thinking, I was actually just thinking the same thing.
Let's keep the party good.
Yeah, we're almost there.
Moving on, no ordinances, we have two resolutions. Resolution 2022-2437, establishing, approving a policy regarding the naming of city-owned properties and streets. City Clerk Sims.
Good evening again. At the commission meeting of May 10th, the city commission discussed the establishment of a naming policy for city-owned properties and streets. A number of examples were given to the commission to review. We have come back with a naming rights policy, which would be approved and established if the resolution is approved tonight. A naming policy would establish a uniform and visible process for naming city-owned properties and streets. This policy would ensure naming is consistent with the values of the city. So the recommendation is to approve resolution 2022-2437, establishing a naming rights policy for city-owned properties and streets. We could go through the policy if necessary as well.
Okay, we have a motion to read.
I'll read.
We have a second?
Second.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Lighthouse Point, Florida, establishing and approving a policy regarding the naming of city-owned properties and streets, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date.
Discussion, Commissioners. Start down there, Commissioner Long, I think you kicked this off yet.
Well, I will be honest with you, this got caught up and I missed it, so that's why I was looking. We're just show up to, so give me a few minutes. My question would be, is there anything in here preclude someone like our former recreation director, John Trudell, have a building named after him?
It's wide open, it pretty much.
Yeah, and I apologize for this, I was just like.
Commissioner Johnson, anything?
No.
Commissioner Marshall?
Doesn't it say something about you have to have 50 people's signatures and stuff? If we want to do something, we don't have to do anything, we can just name something, right? Do we have to, we have to have signatures if the commission decides?
Can the commission generate a request, it's got to come from the people.
Correct.
Do we want, so that's a valid point, does the commission want?
Well, we all have a friend that if we personally wanted it, we could get someone to bring it up and get the signatures.
I like that aspect of it, frankly. It just kind of, it's not going to completely depoliticize it, but it somewhat depoliticizes it, in my humble opinion, so. It's your boy, 50 ain't hard to get, so.
I think that's why it was written that way. It's fine, fine with me, I just get, that was a question.
I had a question on this one.
No, fine with me.
City commission will consider the length of time of the naming to occur, some names are appropriate for a time period instead of in perpetuity. Fiscal impacts of a time period should be considered. What's that mean?
I look at Landshark Stadium, they paid for a sponsorship rights board or AAA arena.
But is this?
We're not going to sell.
Instead of doing it in perpetuity, if somebody says, I'd love to sponsor.
But is this, are we contemplating pay to play here with this policy?
It does give you the opportunity.
Interesting. So your law firm could, like, the building could be made if they didn't want to pay us.
We do have things that have been named.
Right, as a financial.
As with financials, and we have done that. So the idea was to allow, that they took it also out of the city commission's hands if somebody want to be named something in the future too. Right, well, it doesn't, it does, there could be politics associated with the duration of it, I guess, is the.
Correct.
Is my.
Could take it all out.
Yeah, is my concern. I, that's, I was looking right now, sorry. I was trying to remember how to vote. That's all, that's all I really had, I, I don't know, you're either going to have a fight about naming it or fight about how long we're naming it for, so I guess I'd have to rather have a fight about how long we're naming it then.
I'd say some things would be if the building is, has a useful life, 15 years, after 15 years, it's gone, you rebuild it for something else, that could be renamed. Let's say you got rid of Dixon Hall, you know, which was provided there, there's, would be that opportunity to rename it something else if you changed the building. That's, you know, you'll see a lot of that in universities, building is only as good as, the naming is only good as long as the building's there.
Or if somebody does something he knows who the building's named.
Right, that's always, that's always the concern about naming it after living, you know, that's always the concern.
Doreen and Fred look like they're.
Yeah, that's brilliant, you know.
Being on the FBI suspect.
Spend some more time out of town now.
Yeah. Oh, I remember the other thing. Did we, this one, the gift, the gift policy, did we kind of jive that with the gift policy? Is there any, did we see any conflicts with it?
Well, you know, if you have a gift.
To me, a gift does not connote, a gift does not connote paying for something.
Right, you know, we have, if you get a gift, it usually doesn't come with a condition, right? It may become, it may become with some criteria on it, like the Barker Trust, but there wasn't anything there that came that we had to give any special type of naming or whatever. If you had that come up, we could bring this, we could bring an opportunity back to you, but for now, you would have to follow this procedure. If someone wanted to give you, you know, a million dollars in exchange for, you know, naming some building after them.
We'd have to follow this.
You'd have to follow this, which the first step is, will 50 people want that building named after, you know, Jason Joffe?
Definitely not.
Yeah.
Definitely not your name or definitely not the million bucks.
Yeah, both. The thing I was thinking of, just trying to process it in real time, is the, we got a gift of the, remember the soccer things? Those were named, I mean, we didn't name them out, but they had the people's names on it that donated it, right?
Correct.
So what, how would that, if we had a situation like that.
That was a gift.
That that was a gift, so, but if it was, if it was a gift and the part of, so I guess what we're saying is, if it was a gift and they wanted as part of the gift or a condition of gift, that the gift be named after them, it would fall under this policy.
Theoretically, yes. However, you know, let's remember a couple things. This is going to be adopted by resolution. If during the experience of dealing with this, it needs to be tweaked, it takes a resolution to amend it. You know, the naming right, or the gift policy, I believe, is an ordinance, so we would look at the ordinance first. If we, if there was a situation that fell in a gray area that, because, you know, candidly, when you come together with a policy, you know, you don't cover every single possible contingency, this policy right here for naming rights, you know, if it created an issue for accepting a gift under the ordinance, we would bring that conundrum to the commission and say, here's what we recommend you do.
Let me go, we were just kidding about the policy.
Well, it's not that you're just kidding with it, but right now, you don't have anything, this establishes the parameters to start going into it, you know, to have someone, if someone asks, how do you do something, you have an answer. And just like anything else you've talked about tonight, if times move on or experience shows something, it can be looked at.
So these are guidelines?
Well, these will, once you adopt it, these will be what is given to folks.
Yeah, but again, you know, obviously, if it's something important enough, we can change.
It's going to take a vote, just like anything else you do.
Right, right, yeah.
All right, Commissioners, that's all I had, anything else on this? All right, you guys have what to do.
Make a motion?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution 2022-2437, establishing and approving a policy regarding the naming of city-owned properties and streets.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second by Commissioner Patron. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to our final agenda item, resolution, agenda item number seven, resolution 2022-2438, voiding bid and approving an agreement with R&amp;D paving, milling and paving. Pay, pay, pay.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. The city streets require periodic milling and resurfacing, the lake class of neighborhood is in particular need due to numerous depressions, the age of the asphalt, and clean out installations that occurred over the years. The city advertised an RFP on April 25th. We opened the bids on May 25th. I've included, we got seven bids, which is really good, and I've included all the numbers in your agenda item there. Of particular note, the first two of M&amp;M Asphalt Maintenance and R&amp;D Paving, with their bid amounts of, M&amp;M is at $645,000, and R&amp;D Paving was $673,870. But there is a significant difference in the tonnage cost for each company, with M&amp;M being at $250 per ton and R&amp;D being $160 per ton. So we assembled a selection committee, myself, city administrator Loviski, and the city engineer, and we queried during the selection committee regarding an estimate on the tonnage. on the tonnage expected to be needed throughout the neighborhood. There's a number of roadway crowns that need to be rebuilt, there's depressions I talked about, and other dips and things like that that need to be filled in, and the city engineer estimated we're going to need 1,000 tons of asphalt to just fill in the areas that are depressed and sagging. So, when you look at the two numbers for M&amp;M and R&amp;D, the break-even point is at 311 tons, so in this case, we're well over that estimate for the tonnage required. So, based on that city engineer's estimate of 1,000 tons, there's a large, the difference in the tonnage cost really makes a difference. So, based on this, the selection committee recommended R&amp;D Paving as the most responsive and responsible bidder. The proposal submitted by R&amp;D is for $673,870 of their basic bid price, adding the estimated 1,000 tons of asphalt to fill in the depressions and rebuild crowns as described, brings grand total to $833,870. The city administration's requesting authorization to spend up to $875,500, which is the grand total plus a 5% contingency if even more tonnage is needed for other depressions. The project will be monitored by the city engineering's firm to, regarding the tonnage quantities, they'll be counting trucks and certifying trucks, and we'll have records based on that. So, at this point, recommend the city commission adopt the resolution, awarding the bid and approving the agreement with R&amp;D Paving for milling and resurfacing the Lake Placid neighborhood, authorize an expenditure of funds up to $875,500 from the American Rescue Plan Funds, and authorize city officials to complete documents.
All right, commissioners, we have a motion to read?
Motion to read?
Second.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City at Lighthouse Point, Florida, awarding the bid to and approving an agreement with R&amp;D Paving LLC for milling and paving, RFP number 2022-004, authorize the expenditure of funds, authorize the appropriate city officials to execute the agreements and all necessary documents, and providing for an effective date.
Discussion.
I have a question. You say we have depressions, holes in the street, are we going to just, from what I read here, it appears that you're just going to fill these holes in, or are we going to dig out what, what the problem is?
So, a lot of the depressions are just settlement, so it's the road base, we are not going to dig up the city and the area, so what they'll do is they'll mill the first inch, and then they'll fill in the depressions there to make it smooth as possible, and they'll set the machine at 2%, cross slope, and they'll pave.
So, but the bad stuff's still going to be there?
Well, we don't know what the depressions are caused from, typically, it's just settlement over the years. In a lot of cases, the asphalt in the area is still not so bad, but there's no more crown. So, it's just settled, and quite frankly, it's the road base and high and low tide. The road base over there, it's very close to the beach, it's mostly sandy. There's road rock on top of the sand base, but this is what's required for periodic milling and resurfacing, that's why we require it. Otherwise, we're digging up the streets all the way down and dealing with all the utilities, and the cost would be tremendous.
Yeah, I know that, especially the areas, I guess it's like 32nd South, on those streets that go east-west, I mean, they've, they've really, over the decades, have lowered it, you know, houses have kind of gone with it, now, a lot have been redeveloped and they brought in a lot of fill there, but there's some houses there that are literally below the crown of the road, because that's sunk a little bit more, but where we do this, we're not increasing, other than the grade, we're not increasing the level of the asphalt any higher.
No, sir.
So, you're not going to have flooding going into their.
No.
Their neighborhood, or their, in this case, living room, but, yeah, okay.
Now, in some cases where there's no crown, and.
You'll have some.
Two weeks ago, the road was completely covered with water, the crown will help push some of that water to the sides, but not into the homes. It's not, it's not a net change.
But, we're not going down one inch, lifting up two.
No.
Right, you're just doing the crown and.
Correct.
Got it.
We're going to inspect if we have a potential of a sewer line leaking, or the potential in that, and where these depressions are, we're going to investigate to be sure that there's not something going on that's, I mean, you're going to, it's like putting lipstick on a pig. You know, you fill this thing in, and then 10 years from now, it's back down to where it was. I, I don't get that, spending money like that.
So, we know that there are some sewer issues, and we have that documented, and that'll be presented to the county this week, and we're considering if they come in there after the fact, and they want to do a repair for some reason, we expect to come back with a form of an ordinance for discussion and perhaps approval, where we're going to make a requirement that they have to pave a certain amount of the street, say, at least a full lane width, at least 50 feet, if they had to make a sewer lateral repair. Because we want to get this done, this has been another item that's been kind of sitting here for a little while, the residents there have been promised, and we can't wait on the county to come in there and fix all their pipes. But, we can make a requirement that if they do, after we do this, they have to pave a full lane width and make it.
That was.
Nice patch.
That was my main concern, because I'm just tired of, I'm tired of the county coming in and paving half a road. I mean, it's a fine line.
I think they should do the whole road. If they're going to do it, they're going to do the whole thing.
Well, that, I, my, my suggestion, just to piggyback off of this a little bit, because it was one of the things I wanted to talk about, and it's, it's a double-edged sword, because it is county sewers under there, we want them to continue to update the sewers, we don't want to dissuade them, but I think some sort of notification, a letter to the county saying, dear county, we are paving a major section of our city, you have any projects planned, that are going to dig up our beautifully new paved roads, you know, here's your chance to tell us about them so we can plan, and/or we expect that if you come in and tear up our roads, that you're not going to basically be doing what you've previously been doing, which is.
Half a patch.
Half a road, half a patch, we're doing it. And I think that needs to be done, I think it can be done in a respectful way, I think it's done on a reasonable request, and, you know, I, I hope it'll be well received, because we're just trying to be prudent with our money. So, that was, I think that's, I understand your point completely, but we didn't, if we only paved when the county.
No, no, I understand, I just, it's like Chuck said, you know, you don't, don't want them to come in and tear it up after, if there's something that they can fix or can be fixed beforehand.
Right.
Then it should be done.
There are, there are, there are good things and bad things about having some of our major infrastructure not owned and operated by the City of Lighthouse Point.
But, the majority of Lake Placid's issues, and, you know, Chuck knows a number of the issues, but from the sewer perspective or stormwater perspective, his fact is from the original developer and developers with the road rock, and you can see, if you recall, a couple of years ago, when Hillsborough built up their, built up their road, I mean, they literally had to take down and just build up from scratch, and they still have flooding problems, but, but it's not that, you know, we have not followed through with stuff as far as, why is this road sinking, it's because the developer in 1955 decided to dig up stuff, and it was all mangroves, and just kind of plow it over and bring in fill, instead of doing the right thing with the, the rock and everything else, but, and that's why that whole area is depressed, but, and I think that's a lot what you're talking about, other than the specialized items that we know are from a sewer and from stormwater.
That's absolutely correct, even on the Forest Main project that recently went up 39th Street, I was over there, and I looked in their trench, and in one place, there was approximately six inches of road rock, which isn't quite enough, there should be 12 inches, and underneath, there was a big, thick layer of muck.
Yeah.
So, the, that was outside the trench line, right at the, right at the side of the trench. The contractor on that job is actually using an innovative recycled concrete product for roadbed, which is quite impressive.
Cool. Commissioner Petron?
What is going on with the paving of that? That's not finished, is it?
No, no.
Okay.
So, they, they put down a temporary asphalt so that it's drivable, although not smooth. I spoke to the contractor today, there, the pipe is, the main pipe is in, it's connected, they're just waiting on DEP certification, which they expect within a two-week timeframe, they have two more structures to install, one of them, they can't, one of them, they can't do until the old Forest Main is off, because it's so close to the old Forest Main, and the old Forest Main was in such poor shape, they don't want to dig that close to the old Forest Main and have it break in the middle of putting in the structure, so they're going to get the new pipe certified, they get that back, they're going to abandon the old pipe, at the same time, turn on the new pipe, they'll abandon the old pipe, they're going to fill it with grout, and then they'll do these, couple of installation of these two structures, I think one's at 44th Street, one of them's about 42nd Street, and when that's all done, they will pave.
Okay.
And they told me today, they hope to have all that done by the end of July, which is approximately eight months at a schedule. The, the initial schedule that came from the county showed a completion date of March next year. So, the contractor is not going to be here that long, they want to finish up, they want to pave and be done.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I had, anything else, Commissioner?
No.
John, Commissioner Johnson, you're okay? Okay, I had two other things, I'm going to ask this probably every time we get, we spend American Rescue Plan money, we're comfortable, as the world stands right now, that this is an authorized and appropriate use of American Rescue Plan funds?
It's a capital expenditure, so, yes.
Okay. And I'm going to say, you know, I'm going to, I'm in favor of this, I articulated this when we first talked long ago about paving, there are many, 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 many areas of the city that need paved. My preference would have been that we started with the major thoroughfares, but I'm not going to deny that Lake Placid, meaning 39th, Lighthouse Drive, probably 49th as well, but I'm not going to deny that Lake Placid needs a lot of love, and has needed a lot of love for a long time, so I'm going to support it, but I, I really would like to see us take a look at the major thoroughfares, so we're not just spotting this and.
Right.
Running into the issues of, you know, you paved this area, why didn't you pave that area? Everybody enjoys Lake Placid, probably drives on it, or Lake Placid, everybody enjoys Lighthouse Drive and drives on it every day, so that's going to continue to be my, my call for my, my, my thoughts, so. Anyway, that's all I got, and I think, are we all okay about, it sounded like Chuck, you were going to do it, but I think, or administration's planning on doing it with the notification of the county of our, of our grand plans here, and.
Yes.
Everybody on board with that?
Yeah, that discussion.
Yes.
All right, we have done that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, we've confirmed with the county, they got no projects going on, there could be some emergencies.
Yeah.
They don't have a big sewer project on that. We did that before we put out.
Okay.
Before we awarded the bid.
Okay, great.
And Chuck mentioned, and I can expand on that, Chuck mentioned an ordinance, we talked to the mayor this morning, we're going to bring back an ordinance to the city commission about anybody who does work in, in the roadway, the amount that they have to pay. If, if we're going to give them a right-of-way permit, they're going to have to follow this amount of paving. And there's no argument then about what they want to do and what we want to do would be, it would be an ordinance passed by the commission.
Okay.
And what's the timing on this, and I'm assuming, hate to say that, but this will happen after the 27th Street, 34th Street, stormwater improvement.
So, 27th Avenue, the structures are under construction, they're looking at four to six weeks, and I believe we talked about starting this in mid-July, so there may be some overlap.
So, make sure that's done before they overlap it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I.
Just wanted to say something.
Go for it.
I imagine former Commissioner Walker is sitting home, listening to us now jumping with joy.
I thought he said, I thought he, I thought he said he was, he thought, he liked the main thoroughfare, but I'm sure he's going to be, I'm sure he's happy, I think.
I'm just sure he's not listening. And this has been part of our plan, this year was part of the plan, this is Lake Placid's year.
Yes, hundred percent.
That was part of the plan, so.
Any other discussion, commissioners?
No.
Who would like the honor?
I'll make a motion that we award the bid to M&amp;M.
No.
I mean, R&amp;D, I'm sorry.
It's a resolution, you want to do it by resolution, number seven.
Resolution 2022-2438, awarding the bid and approving an agreement with R&amp;D Paving LLC for milling and paving, RFP 2022-004.
Beautiful.
How'd they do?
Second. Second. The second, a motion by Commissioner Marshall, a second by Commissioner Johnson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I got a quick question, just, Chuck, I mean, was this great pricing, good pricing, or like, oh my God, we had really taken the cleaners on this, but don't have a choice?
We thought it was pretty good, I, I was personally surprised it wasn't more with the price of oil now, and some of the things we've heard in the industry, so I think we got a competitive price.
So, if we were to look at, you know, continuing the paving in the main thoroughfares, the Lighthouse Drive, 39th, and others, are we able to use this contract price?
We could certainly do that.
And they would agree?
They may have an escalation based on the price of oil, we can approach them about that for more scope.
Can I expand on a little bit? Yeah, the contractor, he said it was low, we asked him, you're way lower per tonnage than anybody else, can you do the job? And they said they have even built in a price increase that they're anticipating, so we, we don't expect any problem at all, and if, and if, let's say, oil goes through the roof, and we need to have the contractor, you know, escalate the price a little bit, I think the commission would consider approving a reasonable price escalation based on, you know, what, what the cost of oil is, but you can continue to use this contract throughout the city.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's pave. We're done with our agenda items, moving on, public request from the floor, this is the time where, open mic, so if you want to come up and address the commission on any issue we've talked about or haven't talked about, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Matt Donahue, 2820 Northeast 39th Court. With reference to the van situation, I would like to see if you guys could just revisit the length, just doing some quick studying here online, you know, you could go down to our local C dealership and get a conversion van from his lot, that would be out of the ordinance based on the 233.5, I think is what you guys said, it's a significantly longer van, and then these Sprinter vans, and again, that's just using Mercedes-Benz name, but these kind of conversion vans, some of these are significantly longer than that, and I don't think that we want to put our code enforcement officers in a position that they're going to go out there with a measuring tape, and I don't know that they would feel comfortable going out there on somebody's property and yanking out their measuring tape to do it. I think your conversation about being a passenger van is the key terminology, and as Commissioner Joffe said, if it fits in the driveway, it's not out in the middle of the right-of-way, and it's not causing a problem. I really think we're going to be causing an issue with people that have these as that personal van for their family, and they're going to be over on the length, and are we going to really cite these people, or tell them that they can't park their van in the city now because it's over the length? So, I, I understand where you're heading with it, to try to eliminate the RV aspect of it, but I would like, ask if you guys could take into consideration the conversation of maybe removing that, that length on there, because if you look in and do some research in what these vans run, you're going to be, majority of those are going to be well outside of your, your length that you guys put in that. Thank you.
All right, anybody else, please?
Hi, Laura Sobel, 3200 Northeast 31st Avenue, just questions whether or not you'd like to review the samples that we left, just to reconsider the possibility of the blade lengths, we're looking for a manicured look, not a golf course look, which I totally can see what your concern would be, because that really is not the best look for a neighborhood, so just something to consider. If you'd like to keep them, we'd like to leave them with you, or if not, I'll get them off your hands. And then regarding the swale, like, with the turf, we go north a little bit to Boca, to Royal Palm, 50% of the homes have turf.
To the street.
To the street, and it looks amazing, I mean, and so that's something to consider. I did reach out to the city of Boca, Raton, and they said they have no restrictions, nothing as far as installation of turf, so people just have installed it, and it's, I guess if it was an issue, they would have stopped it, so it does look beautiful, you're not looking at, right now, everything's green and beautiful because we've had someone train. Six months from now, you have the weeds and brown spots, and it just doesn't look as polished, so that's what we're looking for, something to look nice. It is an expense, it's not, it's so much less expensive to put inside, turf just looks a little more manicured. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like me to, would you
I don't need, I don't need the sample, so.
More so you could see how it's
I want to go check it out and install it, I intend to do that, but I don't need, if somebody else wants to retain it, keep it.
After your meeting on
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Harvey Silverstein, 3201 Northeast 31st Avenue, I know I've talked to several of you guys on the commission about this in the past, but we live in a very nice city with a lot of people, with a lot of resources, and I don't feel like we utilize that enough. If we want to wrap these boxes, we should get the prices and let people pay for it if they want to. If you have one of these on your street, I feel like someone would be interested in that instead of worrying about where we're spending our city's money, which we have much bigger problems, we have bridges, we have roads. I think for these beautification projects, which I think look really nice, and people say, hey, these look really nice, I think you'll get people who are interested in contributing. And that goes for buildings and whatnot, not anyone here, but I think there are a lot of people that would be interested in stuff like that.
All right, anybody else? Anybody, we have one person online?
It's the first.
Give them an opportunity to raise their hand. He?
Marie.
Oh, okay. I didn't know, I always wanted to do that one. All right, I don't see our attendee on Zoom raising her hand, so I think we're good there, no one else in the gallery? All right, we'll close public comments, public requests from the floor, communications from Commissioners, start with you, Commissioner Johnson.
How do you know? I have something that I've been doing a lot of thought about, actually for a long time, started last year, but I discarded part of my thoughts from last year, but seeing the way our city is now in these multiple projects and all the things we have to discuss at our commission meeting, which is great because we're getting so much done, but we really need to address before our budget meeting, I think we need to address our salary for the mayor, because our mayors, I brought up a year or so ago, the salary of the Commissioners, and you all voted against it, and, you know, that's fine, but the mayor in our city is not the mayor that our city was designed to have when we put a strong mayor in in 1959, and most of the mayors stopped for an hour or two on their way to work and took care of it, but our mayor now has a huge job. I mean, we have John who has a huge job too, and works from sunrise to sunset and maybe past every day, but we have a mayor that does that too, and we've had, you know, others also, and I don't think it's fair to think that anybody should spend as much time as it takes really to run the city now with the meager amount of money that we pay them, because, you know, in two years, we'll have another election, how many people would be able to even consider running for mayor with the, just small, it's just a slight contribution? We'd be basically, you're basically saying someone that's fortunate enough to have a schedule that they can fit it in, or a very wealthy person, or retired person, but you take it totally out of the hands of anybody that could, I don't know, how many people would be willing to put in as many hours for that amount of money? And I just, I just think that we need, I mean, most Commissioners in Broward County, most Commissioners in most cities make more than the mayor of our city does, and if you compare it to the only other city in our county that has a strong mayor, I think she makes like $140,000, $150,000 a year. Now, that's a much bigger city, I understand that, and there's a lot of departments, but I think we need to discuss, not just for our present mayor, but for our mayors in the future, that we have to realize, in order for us to get all this stuff every week, every meeting, it takes the people behind the scenes to get it to us, and it takes a lot of hours, and I think we really need to have a discussion and think about it, and like I said, not just for today, but for two years from now, and six years from now, and 10 years from now, as long as we have this form of government, I think we need to think about it. So what do you think?
I agree with you, Sandy, I mean, I don't know how we proceed, but I agree with you 100%.
I agree.
Down there?
I'm not going down this road anymore. We've talked about it over the years, but it's not going down the road anymore. It's not to take away what the mayor, or former mayors, or future mayors have done, but, you know, when it gets talked about salaries, it's a no-win situation in this city.
But being, you know, the thought that was thrown out when we talked about the Commissioners getting more salary was, you know, public service and all, you could, you could put that with us, public service, even though we do spend time and we do put in a lot of hours and all, but it doesn't compare to what being a mayor of a city today with all the things that are going on, there's just so many things going on. When we finish one thing, we'll be right smack into another, and it's a never-ending cycle, and you can't, you just can't, putting your head in the sand and embarrassing us by not, I don't know, being professional, considering that this person is professional enough and needs to be compensated for their time.
Has the, when has the salary change last?
Ah, I think, the mayor used to get like $4,000 or $5,000, and I think it was maybe 10 years ago or so
Glenn Oats was mayor.
Was Glenn the mayor?
Yeah, I thought it was Glenn, I think it was Glenn, Dan Oats was 18.
What was that, John? When was it?
When Dan Oats was mayor, it went to 18.
And it hasn't changed since?
Hasn't changed since.
So, and I mean, look at, look at what goes on now in this city and what's expected to be the mayor.
That's over 20 years, right? Since Dan Oats was
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's just time, I mean, we don't have to wrap our little boxes with pretty things or put a fence around the police station, those are things we can discuss, but, but to, but to have somebody that is willing to do this job, we need to, we can't expect them to do it for a dollar an hour, it's just not fair.
You have to line it back to saying, do we want to keep this form of government? I mean, we have a city administrator who is, you know, extremely competent, well, very successful in what he does, but it's been brought out in the future, what type of situation do we have? We have somebody who says, yeah, I'm running, and hey, maybe I'm enticed by the money, but I have absolutely zero qualifications to do it.
Well, then the people won't vote for you.
Well, no, it doesn't always work, but.
Yeah, but if we, if we go to the other form of government where we have, like everyone else does here, we would then have to hire an assistant to our city administrator, or have, whatever they call them in the
The manager.
We would have to hire an assistant to John, let's say, and we'd be paying them $100, $125,000. So we're not asking for that for the mayor, but we certainly, we certainly need, no matter how we go with this position, whether we go with the mayor forever or if we go for the other form, those two people at the top that are doing all the work have got to be paid for it in today's dollars, so.
Well, I mean, you're getting the same thing about the Commissioners too, so, and we've gone down that road, we lose every time, it's embarrassing, and, you know, it's just, this is how the city is.
Oh, wow.
And we'd like to change our mind, but, you know, honestly, I'm not going down that road.
Well, how about, but I heard other Commissioners say
That's great, I'm telling you
I think it's something we need to look at, because it's a huge job, and Mayor, you've done a great job of spending, you know, what, 50 hours a week probably?
Yeah, I mean, really
More than that?
More. And that's, that's what it really takes to get us where we are, it takes the mayor, it takes the city administrator, it takes all of the people here in the town, but everybody that works in this town, I believe, every single person from the newest hires to the oldest hires, there's no one that makes less than the mayor. Now, that's, I think that's wrong. That's just, that's just wrong.
May I throw something out here? John's been here through, how many mayors, John?
Three.
Six.
Oh, before you were city administrator.
You've, you've seen
Three of city administrators.
You've seen what those mayors did and the time that they spent, I think that if we allow John to come up with some kind of a proposal, and we don't want to embarrass the mayor right now because, you know, we're talking about him and the job that he, the good job that I believe he's doing at this point, let John come up with some kind of a guidance for us to look at for a possibility of a, you know, increase in the mayor's salary from what he's seen and what he can envision happening, let's say, if somebody just wants the job because they want the job and they don't have a clue. So John has enough experience in that to give us some kind of a guidance.
I wouldn't put a staff member who answers to the mayor that position, that puts him in a very awkward position.
Well, I don't think we're talking about giving the mayor like $300,000 where somebody's going to say, oh, I'm going to run for mayor so I can make that money, we're just saying that you have to be able to pay them back for some of their time if you really want them to be dedicated and do a good job, but I don't think
Sounds like you got consensus, so you can bring it up as a motion later on, but
Right, we can, we can bring it up as a motion, but we have to talk about how we're going to do this, who's going to make the decision?
It's by resolution, I believe.
Can I suggest something?
Sure.
It's come up during commission comments, so you don't need to take any act, why don't you ask that to be put on the future agenda, even the next agenda, and some information may be provided to you objectively, maybe, you know, you have some information from plantation, there might be other information that can be gathered, and you can put it on as a discussion item and provide some formal direction at that time, as opposed to trying to
We're so good at discussion.
How would, how would that work as far as the budget, though?
Since our next meeting is a budget meeting, would we be able to accommodate this amount of money in the budget? Would there be flexibility if it's not voted on?
Well, you have to approve a change in the mayor's salary by ordinance, so you're not going to
Oh, we can't do it on time.
You, you can prepare for it, because you don't actually adopt the budget and the millage until September, this is all preliminary, but what you can't do in September is raise the millage without having to renotice it or raise your assessments than what you set in July. So you do some types of, and you'll hear that in, at the meeting on budgeting, you do some forecasting, and then it gets refined and you do the final things in September. So, you know, if you were to discuss it and have a range or an idea of what, what could go into the budget when it comes back to you in, on July, there's, there's some logistics that could work for providing a number in the budget, providing time to have it, the ordinance done before October 1st, which would really be the steps you'd need in order to put it in place for the next fiscal year.
So can we put it on our next meeting, on the agenda for our next meeting? Is it too late, or is that?
We can.
If you can.
If that's the consensus of the commission, we'll put it on for discussion.
And I don't mean to embarrass Kyle, because this is my idea, not, not certainly
I never quite understood why the Commissioner salaries had to be approved by the voters and the mayors didn't.
Right.
I, I never really quite understood why.
It's actually in the ordinance, and, you know, we talked about that.
I remember that.
Changed the ordinance.
So let's just put it on our
I'm fine putting it on.
And then we can have, everybody can think about it some, and then we can think in our minds in the next few weeks how we could go forward with it as far as coming up with a number or whatever. That's all I have to say.
Was that a motion that you wanted?
It's comment.
I'd just like to make one comment with Commissioner Marshall said, I appreciate that comment, but I think my role is to advocate for salary increases for department heads, and you all take care of the elected
Right, right.
He trusts you.
He's on his own.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Commissioner Long.
Do we need a vote to put it on the agenda?
I don't think so, I think we have
If you have a consensus, which you've got in Pat, that consensus during your discussion, we'll put it on for the next meeting.
Okay.
Commissioner Long?
Please contract. We're
Please contract, they, we made an offer, and they have the contract, they're reviewing it, and if they want to come back and change some things, the lawyer can, or if they can take it to a vote, but they do have a contract.
So it's not going to vote yet?
To my knowledge, no.
Do we have any assumed timetable on that?
We hopefully, hope to put it on the agenda for the 28th, but I'm not sure we're going to make it, then we'll make it to, try to make it the first meeting.
So they have to vote on it before that if we're going to put it on the agenda?
They would have to vote out, yes. They've got perk laws, they have to post it for so long, it's retroactive, so sometimes when it's retro, they're not in a hurry, that's one thing about offering retro, is not in a hurry to sign a contract.
Yeah, I mean, those are just some of the priorities we have.
Anything else, Commissioner Long? Commissioner Marshall?
When are we going to get our budget information?
Is Corey still here? We will get it to you next Wednesday, we're looking for next Wednesday.
Okay.
So we have more than a couple days to look at it, that's all.
That's the plan, if it goes, good.
I understand, I understand that the Code Enforcement Board was canceled because they couldn't get a quorum.
Community appearance.
Community appearance.
Pardon?
Community appearance.
Community, no, 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 Code Enforcement.
I think it was Community.
Code Enforcement, the last meeting, they didn't have a quorum or something.
Oh, I'm just going off, what was the next meeting out here? There was a prior meeting? Okay.
That was Code Enforcement, didn't, and I know that I sat on the Code Enforcement Board for a couple years, or a year, or whatever it was, and I was an alternate, and I was, you know, I participated in every meeting. I would, Mayor, can you, this is a plea to you to see if you can find some people that, I realize that it's a tough job, but, you know, maybe we can persuade some people to start stepping up and working so that these boards can have enough people, and is it possible to get a attendance record? I think you guys used to get that every year, attendance record for who comes to the meetings and who doesn't, it makes it a little easier with, you know, the hybrid meetings where people don't have to show up here, that they can be here, but that we could potentially entice some people into becoming members of boards.
Do you want me to answer that, Commissioner Marshall?
If you'd like.
That has been a priority, myself and Sims have looked at it, I'll be very honest with you, that is a large undertaking, and it has not, is not the level priority that some of the other things that we have been focusing our efforts on. And Ren, I'll be very frank with you, there are several boards that have, all the terms are expired, we haven't done, which is fine, which is perfectly fine, we could have that, but again Do Commissioners serve after their terms expire too? Or is it, or mayors, or is it
So if there's recounts, if there are vote contests, you know.
So my point is, is absolutely, we are well onto it, but there is a lot of moving pieces. There are all the boards, there are different requirements for each board, as you know, you know, whether it's marine advisory, needs certain amount, certain types of people with certain skill sets, you know, there, there's just a lot that goes into it, and if you move one board, or you're looking to update one board, it may be best to utilize a person that has a skill set that may fit into something because you're missing that piece in the other board, maybe looking for a marine, you know, lawyer, or you're looking for an architect, or you might be looking, so it's a lot bigger than just picking, we do have plenty of applicants, I know, I've talked to Ms. Stafford about it, she's here, but I've spoken to multiple people, putting, to make sure that we're meeting all the requirements that are set out by our ordinances for those boards is part of the issue too. I just, you know, you know, maybe the people that can't show up or don't show up, maybe the only person that we have that has that certain degree or has that certain license, and, you know, we might have to advertise to find that person, but again, it comes back down to, it's, although it looks like it's just one board, it's all of the boards put together where you got to make sure that you're taking that pool and plugging the pieces where they need to be. So it is on our agenda, I already promised you, it's already, we talked about it today, it's already on our agenda for an upcoming meeting to start the process of going over board by board, but there's a lot that goes into it.
One other thing, I noticed that this, and this may be a question for Chuck or John, in my travels in my wheelchair, up and down Lighthouse Point Drive over the past couple months, there's sidewalks that were replaced by the county when they did their project. their project. And I believe that at the corner of, you know, where the four-way stop street is out here at, you know, in front of the church, I think they, they tore up the sidewalk also. And the sidewalks are not being put back handicap accessible. There's no little buttons, or whatever you want to put, they're not there. The, the street, I'm not sure what the name, what number street it is, but there's actually a manhole cover in the sidewalk that is at least this big around, and there's this much sidewalk from the street to there that they've replaced, and there's no indication for, you know, a handicap person to know that now he's on the sidewalk, other than the, the manhole has buttons. But if they're, if they're going to replace these sidewalks, then they should replace them back the way they were. I mean, they may not have been the greatest buttons in the world, but at least they were handicap accessible. And I, you know, I think that we need to, if we're going to have a discussion with them about their generator in August, then we talk about it then, or we go out there and we look at it, and we make sure that they do what they're supposed to do on this corner now.
We, I mean, that's something, thanks for bringing that to our attention. That's something we will call Broward tomorrow, but we're not going to hold off on that. That's something we need to resolve. If they're not putting in the dimple pad, they, they absolutely need to do that.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Marshall?
Nope, that's it.
Commissioner Petrow.
A couple of things. I understand that filling the board position is a huge, huge, huge job. I'd like to see some sort of term limits. I mean, we have them here, you have them as mayor. I speak to marine advisory, there's people that have been on there for 20 years. We need to get some fresh blood.
It's part of, it's part of the whole process. That's part of the reason why it's taking so long.
Okay.
And we also don't want too much turnover, and losing people that are, that have the qualifications is tough also, so sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, that's a huge job. Fire chief, have we got anywhere with that?
We were, we were finishing up the last of the background checks. I don't know exactly how it all went, but we should have, hopefully, once we finish all of it. So, once we have that, then hopefully we'll be seeing somebody on the 28th.
Oh, wonderful. Good news. Okay, great. When is the grand opening of the firehouse? I get that question asked every day at the Red Fox.
You got us going on the Red Fox.
Oh, there you go.
So, if you did, so, I'll, I'll give, I won't put John or Chuck on the spot, or Bill Gallo, or anybody else. I will, I will say this. We are going through, huh?
I thought we had an opening, but okay.
We did have a.
Like, like an occupation, like when, when is it going to become a fire station?
We had the discussion a little bit today, but ultimately, again, the fire station will be done once the work is complete.
That is a horrible. That is a horrible answer. What does that mean?
So, 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 I would say, I would say that, I would say that we are going to have to look at September.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if you, and listen, I know Chief Long is, if he's not here, but you could, if there is an opportunity, I'll have Chief Long, if you'd like to have a tour of where we are currently at, but there are, there's still a lot of work that goes into that, and being that it's going to be an EOC center, and all the other infrastructure technology stuff that's going to add, that's going to house all our stuff, it's all taking time. And as one of my good friends says, one of my good neighbors that I know says all the time, it's all supply chain issues and COVID, so that have, that have slowed us down, so.
It'll be worth it when it's finished. Let's just hope we don't have a hurricane. And one last thing, I think we, commissioners, I believe, also you, received a letter commending our city plumbing inspectors, Peter and Michael, I believe, were the names. It's so nice to hear residents say something nice about the building department, because we hear so many bad things, so it's so nice to hear good things.
I agree.
And that's all I have.
I think everybody got it, and we're done?
Yeah.
I, two things. The library is back to its regular hours, including two extended nights, or two extended nights Saturday, Saturday. Right, extended one night and one, and Saturday. And Saturday. I believe they're running something like 19 programs out of there. And my daughter was at one of them today, watercolors, I believe, so, taking advantage of that, so encourage everybody to check out the library, and that it's back to pre-COVID, and pumping out good stuff. So, that was good. Very good to hear. Return to somewhat normalcy, although I don't know what normal means anymore, or what changes these days. And then also, I know, I talked to the mayor briefly during the rain, which I was not here for, but I did get a comment, and maybe it was already noted. I know you were trying to send people out to look for areas where there was particular flooding, but 53rd Street and Lighthouse Drive was one that was pointed out to me as, as having, maybe it was already noted, but I was asked to, to convey that. So, please, you know, keep that in mind as we.
That was, that was bad two days after the rain.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
Because I was up there, that was really bad after the, after the rain.
So, just pointed that out, but that's, that's all I had. I thought this was a very good meeting tonight, and hopefully on to other things. Mayor, take us out?
First and foremost, commissioners, thank you for all the discussion items this evening. I know, again, it was a fun-packed full agenda. I do appreciate the candor and also the direction, so that we could wrap up some of these things, I think is important for the future. To your point, Commissioner Doffey, we did, during the rain event, do a lot of tracking through our public works department and our police department. I was doing, you know, we prepared for the storm, even though it was a rain event, but we still prepared, and we still monitored, and we still looked at it, and we have pictures, and so on and so forth, which I think is, was important to this whole process. I do hope that we get, commissioners, that we all utilize our, our best to get folks out to come and give their input for this stormwater master plan. I think this is important. There's a lot that's going to go into it, but I, again, I come back to just like the discussion tonight. I want our residents and the commission to have the voice and recognize it's being heard, and that we're looking forward and moving forward to the future, and wherever that takes us. As we move forward, we do have some heavy agendas coming up for the next two, because we do have our, and the meeting in July is taken off, so we'll see some robust agendas, unfortunately, for everybody.
This wasn't robust?
It was robust.
It was robust, but we still have robust agendas, and, you know, we want to, we want to continue to move forward. But finally, I would like to say, I, I want to thank all the commissioners for coming out for our first employee appreciation luncheon. I was, listen, we don't say it enough, just like we don't tell the building department that, you know what, they've done a good job by saving our resident $20,000, by sticking up and doing what was right, by the way. So, I thank you, Commissioner Petrow, for bringing that up. But we have the best employees, like I said that day, and the fact that the commissioners were there with their families, serving our employees, showing them how much we care, talking to them, spending time with them. I think that, to me, that is what makes Lighthouse Point amazing. And I wanted to thank you. I think, I thought it was a great, I thought it was a great event. I look forward to doing more in the future. I look forward to some other ideas I have, but it's really important to thank our employees for all that they do, and just not on that, just not on Employee Appreciation Day, but all the time.
Every day should be employee.
Yeah, every, every day. I remember that as a kid, every day's worth a thing. With, with all that being said, again, thank you for giving us all the direction, and that's it.
Anything else, commissioners? Nice little group tonight. We are adjourned. It's every day.
The last meeting is September.
It's every day.
The last meeting is September.
Jennifer did this for years ago.
It was good seeing you. Oh, you did?
See you, Mike. Have a nice evening.
Yeah. It was good seeing you.